All right. Good evening, everyone. Time is six o'clock on November the 16th, 2021. And we're getting underway with Duncanville City Council meeting here in the city of Duncanville at 203 Wheatland Road. I've never done that before, but this side. And just to let everyone know, both online and in person here, we are in hybrid mode. We are live and we are also online and probably will be for some time going into the future until we have some kind of a change. So, thank you very much for your understanding as we work through. We have a very, very big agenda tonight and hoping that we are able to get through the items as well as possible. There's a lot of reading. It was only 80 megabytes. When I downloaded it, it said 80 megabytes and it only took about 14 hours, but it's okay. Enjoy yourself as hell. Ah, very good to see Mr. Velazquez back. And you want to introduce the new person?
Yes, may I ask a second more to introduce our newest members? There's two new members, one promoted, one new.
Yes, well, we have two members or really one totally new one, but one new to the position. So I'll take the first opportunity to introduce Ms. Cassandra Wright. Cassandra, she's been with the city for about nine years. She was our utility, Assistant Utility Billing Manager. She has now been promoted to the Utility Billing Manager and has successfully converted us to a new software system in her first 30 days in her role. Okay, so we did challenge her and she rose to the occasion and so we are so proud to have her. If you all have had any interaction with Ms. Wright, you know that customers are her first concern and she tries to do a very good job at it and I appreciate her and welcome to the new position and she's often recommended.
Thank you.
And I have been personally exposed to your expertise. And I've mentioned it before, but when I tried logging on to our new billing system, I fought with it for over 30 minutes. I wasn't getting anywhere and I sent an email. I said, "You need help sending emails." So I figured I'd send an email, go to sleep. 10:30 at night, I get a response from this lady. I felt like saying, "What are you doing awake? Go to sleep."
Yeah, what if I would do?
And she worked me through the login process and interestingly enough, being a guy, now guys around the table, we do not follow instructions very well. But the instructions said, "Please watch the video on how to log on to the new system." But only after working it for a half hour, pulling out what little hair I had, and then finally contacting Cassie, I watched the video and it straightened everything out.
Okay.
So, welcome Cassie. Thank you. I know you've been a very strong asset for our city before.
Thank you.
Our other new personnel, totally new to the city of Duncanville, is Mr. Tayo Chakali, who is our new purchasing manager. Tayo comes to us with a wealth of experience. He has a lot of local government experience, including the city of De Soto, where I had the privilege of working with him for five years. He has come to us from the city of El Paso as an Assistant Purchasing Director. So he has a certification, he is a Certified Purchasing Professional as well as certified in professional contract management. So, we have definitely gained an asset to the city and he is going to be working with the city and with councilors to establish some policies for the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome. And in the process of unpacking household goods, we still get dust out of some of them from the year we spent in Fort Bliss. Great city, great city. Welcome. Okay. Go ahead and getting underway. First thing that we will move to is consent agenda. So, City Manager, it's all yours, going over the consent agenda items.
All right, Mayor and Council, I do have staff here in case there are questions I can't answer. We went over Consent Agenda Item A. Consider Resolution Authorizing the Fourth Renewal Option, Shawty's Mission Tree Service, Argo's Master's Tree Service Using Grapevine's Contract for Tree Maintenance. We request an approval to renew this contract. It's a master contract, including proactive pruning of trees or removal of dead trees, diseased trees, estimated cost of $85,000. The procurement is through an interlocal agreement with the city of Grapevine, who competitively bid these services in 2018. The agreement is renewed annually. Tree maintenance services are utilized by the Parks Maintenance Division and Parks and Recreation and Streets Maintenance Division of Public Works. Private trees are not included in this and Park does not cut, we do not cut any private trees. This is for all public right-of-way trees throughout the city. The city does not have a qualified personnel or specialized equipment to provide this service.
Yes, ma'am.
C, Membership in TIPS. This is Consider Resolution Approving Terms and Conditions of an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Duncanville and Region 8 Education Service Center through a program known as Interlocal Purchasing System TIPS. It's a new interlocal program. Co-op through the lead agency is an educational entity in Texas, offers a wide variety of contracts for which the city could utilize as needed. For example, co-op offers the best practice for walk-through metal detectors. The city would like to procure for true. The same metal detectors in another co-op was approximately $1,000. It gives the city options to procure specific goods in a legal manner while receiving the best value at a lower cost. And the reason we do co-ops, and we're going to talk some more about this in our procurement, is that sometimes when more than one city joins together, we get a better price and so that's why we sometimes join.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Item C, Library Material. The main two vendors most public libraries use are Brought and Baker and Taylor. Both of these are state contracts. The city would receive better values on these contracts through a state contract with bulk pricing than with bidding out on our library. Staff made the decision to just use Want to Simplify their ordering. The preferred vendor staff was picked due to a better options of ordering and the process.
One comment, Mr. Velazquez, I didn't realize until reading this that you purchased, not you, the library purchases four to 5,000 pieces of material a year?
That's just print material. That's not including digital.
Just print? That's just print?
That's not including digital or audio materials.
Wow, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Item D, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Annual Procurement of the Senior Meal Program with Visiting Nurses Association for Food Services for Senior Congregate Meal Program. This is our senior meal program. The estimated price is $200,000. This is through an interlocal agreement with the city of Grand Prairie, I'm sorry, who competitively bid these out in 2017. The meal program provides balanced meals to Duncanville senior population, age 60 and above, at no charge. However, voluntary contributions are accepted. The meal service is financially self-supporting through a grant from Dallas Area Agency on Aging. The program currently provides 100 to 130 meals daily and one does not need to be a member of the senior center to participate.
This is a very, very important aspect of the treatment of our senior citizens. I didn't realize we were treating, we were feeding that many people per day until I read that documentation. So this is very, very important for us. Thank you.
All right. Item F, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Procurement of Water Bill Printing and Mailing Service Through Data Pros.
All right.
Oh, does it get one?
E isn't easy.
There is no E on mine. Let me look at this now. It's okay. I think it may be out of order. If not, I have it on my other sheet. Okay. E is, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Terms and Conditions Professional Service Agreement PSA for Interim Finance Director in the amount not to exceed $53,000 with Strategic Government Resources. On this item, this is an item where we secure the services for our interim through a contract with Strategic Government Resources and within that contract, it was for $50,000, as many of you remember when we briefed when our previous finance director resigned and later retired from the job. The total cost for hours during that time was at $41,844.75, which was under the actual billable amount. However, if we decided, as the contract stated when we signed it, to secure her services, it would then cost a finder's fee, as I'll call it, of $10,000 plus the other thing we had to pay for was a background check and a media search, which was an additional $10,900, which I would have separated. So, the final cost to SGR for this turns out to be $52,744.75. Couple of questions that came about is if we were over our hours, so we were actually not over the billable hours, we were actually under by $9,000. But when we released the job, we had two applicants to apply and we left it open for quite a while, but only one applicant that met the qualifications and so that's how Ms. Adina Admore was selected for this position. And the reason this has to come to you is because when you add in the finder's fee, this placement fee, because they are a recruitment firm, it makes the total amount to that vendor at $52,744.75. Question?
Okay.
Okay. Item F, Data Pros, sorry. The city last bid services for utility billing, printing and mailing in 2015. Most cities in the Dallas-Fort Worth area utilize this vendor. They are local, have great customer service for customers and resolve issues timely. The city of Allen rebid this service in 2019 and Data Pros still was the best value out of the five vendors that responded. Until the transition of software, Duncanville also utilized Data Pros for their online billing portal. Online payments were also processed by the software. For continuity of service during the ongoing transition to Munis, Data Pros is recommended by staff at this time.
Okay.
Okay. F, I mean H, excuse me, ILA for food inspections.
G.
You know what? It's missing every other one.
Solid, not sent by staff.
Okay, that's not an option. All right, I'll read it from here. G, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Emergency Medical Supplies for Found Tree Medical Support Through the Lothian Contract. This is a contract that allows us to purchase our medical supplies. Once again, it's another cooperative purchase contract. The total cost of it was $75,000. Okay. H, Consider Resolution Approving the Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Duncanville and Dallas County to Provide Food Establishment Inspections with a Minimum of Two, One in Every Month. So, this is a service that I've talked about when we talk about our staff and sometimes being lean. We have one health inspector. If our health inspector who has been out for the past three or four weeks is gone, we don't have anyone for emergency inspections and others. And so, this is contracting and having an interlocal agreement with the city of Dallas, or Dallas County to provide these services for our city.
So if we don't require their services, do we have to pay or do we pay like a retainer to have this in effect?
Pay per use.
Per use.
So it's pay per use. And so what it does is gives us the option, if we have multiple things, sometimes if you're having a big event, like a festival, with one person, that's a lot of inspection and so you can bring their services in and they're paid based on the fees that we collect for those inspections. Okay?
Well, then you mentioned that she was kind of overloaded even with the regular items and so will we be using them for, using that person for this as well?
It will allow us to make sure that we are covering all of our needs. Every, we are becoming a very big restaurant place. All restaurants need to be inspected. We also do hotels, we do health clubs and so yes, the answer is, they will help us back her up, but we also have to start looking and we're going to start counting the numbers and making sure that we have a growing path. So she is supported via the fees we collect. If it gets to a point where we think there's more, we may come back and say that we are collecting enough that we may need an additional, or if Dallas County can carry the load and it's not costing us more than we would pay if we did in-house, we may continue using Dallas County.
Okay. Right there, please.
H, Consider Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of Professional Engineering Service Agreement for Engineering Consulting Services Designed for Ten Mile Creek Erosion Control Improvements in the Proposed Amount of $165,000. That is where we talked about our breakage that we've had. The city owns several retaining walls along Ten Mile Creek behind Swan Ridge Drive, four of the retaining walls available in the summer of 2021, which requires new design and we've kind of shown you pictures and some of you received pictures along the way. The design cost of $165,060 paid from the drainage fund. Design work will be performed and the estimated cost on the follow-up of construction is $1.6 million. That is when we talked in our budget about our stormwater fees, our drainage fees starting to be used completely up because we've had some major breaks in it. We put out an RFQ several years ago and we pick from the respondents of the RFQ based on the qualification pass results. We will be putting out a new RFQ in FY 2023 to get new firms to choose from through 2028. Putting policies in place will focus on recruiting and awarding also to focus on minority firms and things like that. But the key is we do try to pre-contract because we know there's a lot of work happening in Public Works and then we try to make sure we move between the firms that are on the contract to give, spread the workout.
I'd like to make a comment on this. It came to, I would say, our attention as a city by one of our citizens who called me and said, "There's a lot of debris in Ten Mile Creek behind his home." And this is in the area of Watergate Park, where Ten Mile Creek circuits back in that particular area. I had walked that little area before just recreationally, but what he pointed out was there's a bend in the creek where when you get these heavy rains and debris is flowing down, it kind of cuts into this corner and it sits there. And there's, one of the pictures that was supplied to us in our package is a picture of that bend in the creek where all this debris is piled up and it's a natural accumulation. It's not a, it's not a people thing. And so, this individual called me and said, "What can we do about it?" Took a look at it, that's when I had a discussion with Mr. Ramey. Because I looked down from the edge of the creek down to where this accumulation of debris is, it's got to be a good 40 feet. And I knew immediately, our people, our staff, not going to go down there and be able to excavate and move this stuff around. This has to be professional. And that's what I can inform the citizens as well, that this is going to take us a little time to figure out how to get down there, get big equipment in there and clean this out. So this item is the culmination of that call and the inspection by our Public Works Director, Mr. Ramey and his staff to say, "This is how we got to get this stuff out of here." So it's necessary, looking at the conditions, some of the bag walls as well. This is a very, very necessary piece of work that we have to do and I'm very glad, you know, that we responded in this way to our citizen, even though this was an unplanned for expenditure in terms of cleaning out this debris in the creek. It's something that's really going to help the water flow through there in the future. So.
Mayor, expenditure that giant is, but I'm glad that they budgeted well enough that you can, right, so, right, right.
Well, are there sufficient funds in the stormwater fund right now?
There is, yeah, but if something else happens, we're in trouble.
For this project.
So, at some point, conditions on the ground may necessitate us to initiate a study regarding the sufficiency of stormwater fees to provide capital funds.
I will say that we will knock on every piece of wood we have, that we will have some time to build this fund back up, but this is something I haven't seen happen this quickly, but we are going to complete that fund in this project. And so, we receive funds annually and funds that come in, but yes, if, I will say to council, if something major happened, we would have to borrow money to fix it at this point in time because the fees are collected through the water fees and you do your bills. So, there, this was a big one. This is, this is the one we didn't expect all at the same time, but it hit us all at the same time. Is that correct? Is that more? Excuse this, ma'am. Just wanted to make sure I'm seeing what I have.
Well, the weather impacts, climate change may determine that conditions on the ground wouldn't warrant us addressing the circumstances more as we move into the future.
You made one comment that I had to question.
Okay.
Not question, but educate. If we have to borrow money, is that real, real borrowing or is that borrowing from one point somewhere where we have money somewhere else and moving it to do this or do we actually have to go out and borrow cash?
I'm going to let our finance expert answer that because she, she looked like she was eager to answer your question.
Well, that is something, as we look at all our resources and I usually take a look at all the resources that we have available to us and then come back to you with a solution and with a recommendation. So what I know about the city's financial situation at this point, depending on how much it is, we might be borrowing from another fund to pay back or we might have to do a bond. If it's small enough, we don't do bonds for small amounts. We look at where we can borrow, maybe internally, maybe going out for anticipation notes or something like that, but we will seek out those.
It's an anticipation note?
It's a short.
No, we just want to do that lap for everybody else.
It's like when you anticipate income coming in later and you can go to the banks or borrow when you come in to finance something for a short-term period and not a long term.
Right. And my question was, do we have enough cash to borrow internally versus not having to go externally? It all depends, I guess.
Absolutely.
And when the snapshot is taken, what do we look like at that moment in time? What the cost of the other project might be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
These will be one of those CDs that we're not getting the interest on, so we'll wait till the time comes.
We're getting interest on all CDs.
Not really.
But yes, we do have the capacity right now to cover small fractions inside with our fund balances and that's why we have a fund balance and you can borrow in the two funds.
If it was more a question of legality, can we move funds around internally?
You can borrow, but it's official. It's just like you're a bank from one fund to the other fund and in some cases, you may pay interest on your borrower or on that other fund.
Yes, you can do inter-fund borrowing and we set it up that way on the books as a borrowing and set the terms and the notes of how long the fund will have to pay back. Yes, you can.
Okay, interesting. All right, thank you.
Let's see, here.
J.
J, Street Sweeping. City contracts for street sweeping each year. It is part of our municipal separate stormwater sewer program, MS4, programs which are intended to keep trash, debris and other pollutants out of our city's stormwater infrastructure, which run directly into our creeks, just what the mayor just finished talking about. This is our third renewal. The contractor in street sweeping services for the city has contracted $86,000.
Well, this, I've never seen a street sweeper at Duncanville, so where, where do they typically run and what hours? No, I'm just saying, I've just never seen.
So the, we do the residential's during the day and we do the arterial's at night. And we do arterial's once a month and then we do the residential's roughly, I mean, four to six times a year as needed. So typically, you know, it depends.
Or do you lie?
And then we do specials and then we do specials like the parade or like say after Yuri, we had ice channel everywhere, we have to go and clean up and there's funds in that for special sweeps as well. But there on the evenings, I've been here like really late and the street sweepers come through the parking lot up here, but they're, we try to keep them out when no one's around.
It's just one truck at night?
I don't know how many trucks they bring, but I know it's, they do it off-cycle relative to when the traffic is on the, on the streets.
It's usually more than one. It just depends on their schedule and they have it divided into districts and everything. But there might be one up here at night and then another one down at the service center and depending on the amount of debris we have.
I've seen it in my neighborhood several times, yeah.
Okay. All right. Item K, VTI Security. This is a continuation of a previously approved item. This is the Minnesota contract Mr. Harvey mentioned. We will be used for this item only. This is for security. This item puts back on track the security camera installation and facilities throughout the city. We are combining one-time project funding from our last fiscal year with this project. The current item is a camera for the Lions Park, additional cameras on the new patio at the Field House, security access control, a city hall annex building and a complete system-wide overhaul with our new security partner, VTI Security. And this is for citywide security. Okay. L, L or my hot fund. L is a consideration approving a grant of hotel occupancy tax in the amount of $45,000 for the Duncanville Lions Club to directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel industry. This is a hot grant for the 71st Sandra Meadows Classic.
Okay.
Was there a change to that or anything to that?
We adjusted everything. It's just a question, yes.
Done? Okay. Yes, sir.
On this item, it's been brought to my attention and correct me if I'm wrong about asking to entertain this idea, that from the time they submitted the application to now, the rooms have increased to the extent that they're at about $47,800, that they'll have to be back to the hotels. Can this council, would we, if we could, consider increasing from the $45,000 previously requested to $48,000 just to round it out?
As I understand it, the way to do the, yes, we can. The answer to that is yes. And we have done it before in previous councils where something has happened from the time the document was given to us to the time we meet, the terms of change and the dollar needs to be changed. What we could do, if consent, move this to items for individual consideration and when it comes out before council, you can make a motion to increase the dollar amount from $45,000 to roughly $48,000 to cover the increased number of rooms that have come up since the application was made. So if we're, if that's, you know, and there's two ways to do this, Mr. Contreras. It can go through as a consent item with $45,000 as is and then Mr. Garcia, the city manager, can come back with another application and add another $3,000 to it, which is going to tie up time and everything else. That's another way to do it so that we don't have to move it out and keep it under individual consent, I'm sorry, for consent, or we can move it out to individual consideration and add the $3,000 out there.
Well, then on that basis, I would like to request that it be moved in individual consideration.
Okay.
And we'll see what everybody thinks then.
And we will look to you for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let me make a note. Item 4L, Individual Consideration. City Manager, if you would help me remember when we get through, should we do that at the very first just to get it out of the way or hold it off until the very end? What's the best way to accomplish this?
I would hold it off to the end just because we have, I guess, speakers coming in.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, okay. So we, when we finish up, Mr. Contreras, I will move to, with some help from reminders to elbows, to come back to 4L and take this into individual consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Okay. All right. Our next one, excuse me, our next is a consideration, this is a, oh, I'm sorry, consider resolution approving a grant of hotel occupancy tax in the amount of $50,000 to the Great American Shootout to directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel industry. Hot tax for this, that's a $50,000 hot tax.
Okay.
That is a huge event that we have worked very hard to maintain in our city and has been highly successful. N, Consider Resolution Approving a Grant of Hotel Occupancy Tax in the Amount of $18,000 to the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce to directly enhance and promote tourism and hotel industry. One thing that has been corrected, I know that if you look at the original council document, I think we discovered, you change it?
Yes.
So they have, so you have new staff reports on it or?
On their iPads, they do.
Okay. We initially listed that there were no grant awards in 1718 and 1819 and that was incorrect and there were grant awards and so it has been updated now. In 1718, they received $16,908, 1819, $17,760. In FY 1920, it was at $33,000 and then 2021, $17,760. So I just wanted to make that correction for that, that is to promote our tourism.
Can we get a deeper explanation? I was trying to find it in here. Since we had a pandemic in '20, a little bit more from the chamber of what happened with them promoting? We couldn't really promote because we were shut down, so just wanted to know if anybody had any information on '20.
Yes, we had, we had provided additional funds for some improvements and some LED lights that they implemented. The council approved that as part of additional funding for some of the improvements they did to the building.
In '20?
In '20, yes.
Is that really in '20?
1920, fiscal year.
Yes, so we said that in '20. Really, yeah, that is my question, but I guess on the business center, we're always having an expenditure like that. I wish I could, wish we could have an outline of what all we've been doing to upkeep of the building because every year it's almost like we're doing something different to
building, cause every year it's almost like we're doing something different to the visitor center, uh, itself versus promoting tourism that we're trying to do.
Right, so, um, Gus Garcia, for the record, uh, council member, so in the back of your report, you'll see, uh, it's acting as the official visitor center for the city of Duncanville, as you know. And so there's a list of the call, city information relocation and office visits that occur at the facility. So they get reimbursed on a monthly basis based on that report that they submit to us, uh, at city hall. And so as far as, if you look at the application, as far as promoting events, hotel, tourism, attraction, it's there. There, the application says not applicable. This is simply, the amount that we're providing is simply, simply to serve as the official visitor center for the city of Duncanville. However, we, I think we discussed this in a previous conversation. If we wanted to do more, like promote tourism, do events, uh, having maybe an event planner, we could offer some more monies to cover some of those expenses. Yes, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Can I restate your question? So what, the question is, and maybe this is something we need to go to them to ask is, when we were in a pandemic and everything was shut down, what were the expenditures that occurred if you could not, if we were in a pandemic? And so this may be not a question that you can answer because you weren't here. And so it might be something we need to follow up and bring back to you.
Okay. But does, does your question preclude approving this item?
I, I would like, I would like more detail though, um, cause every year it's, and I don't have a listing of it. One year's lighting, one year's, it's always something that we have to do to the building.
Signing on the outside, it's the marquee or something like that.
Yeah, is there, is there a listing of something that we could tell must have been done?
What all of the improvements and upgrades and facade changes that are happening?
Yeah, cause I've heard lighting before, that's why I'm asking these questions. I've heard lightings before, so making sure we're not duplicating what we've been doing over the last four or five years.
I know, we've, we've approved exterior signing, they changed some of the sign, we've done lighting, we've done some marquee, we've actually done IT, I think, where they changed some other IT infrastructure that we made, uh, that this money was used for.
Perhaps when Mr. Martin gets back up and around, he can, we can find space on agenda for him to give us a briefing of how we have helped him over the past three to five years.
So that's, that's, that's why I'm asking, is it best, or do you think that we should table this item until Mr. Martin is able to get with Mr. Garcia, get us more details before we approve this one, or do you want to go ahead and approve the eighteen and get more information later?
I'd like to get more information before, before we approve it.
I'm okay with that. Mr. Harvey, you agree with that as well as Mayor Protemo?
I agree with you, but I, I will, I will observe the consensus of the group.
I do. If you pull this off, we could have Gus to have a phone conversation and we can get more information before having it added to the agenda. If you'd like to do it that way.
And, and any documentation they had will be correct too.
Let, let's do some research. If this is at the back of the agenda, then we can come back and then if we can't satisfy your answer, then we can move it.
A quick question on this, on this issue. When, when we do these types of grants, isn't there some type of a report accounting of where the funds go?
Itemization and accounting of every item, yes.
So we don't, we don't have that ourselves?
We get, we do, we get a report when they submit the documentation for reimbursement on the funds. It's called a post-event, it's called a post-event form. You get that.
Would that be detailed enough to satisfy the party?
On the events, the prior, the previous two, as far as the chamber, we could certainly provide that for you as well.
Okay.
So we'll go do some research and come back to you with this item.
And this is a, this is a reimbursable grant. It's not cash upfront, go draw on it. It's as you use it, then you have to ask for it and document the use of it.
Okay.
And I'm more inclined for us to keep it on consent.
So Mr. McPrentice preferred to keep it on consent. Mr. Brooks would prefer that we, well, based on this, how about we hold it where it is on consent and, and see what kind of information we get before we get out there.
I can get you, I can probably get you what you want. I just need the report on, on the reimbursement reports and, and we'll figure out, because we, we have reports.
All right, good question.
Okay.
Okay.
And certainly, uh, the last item, I guess our last item on consent, is consider an ordinance amending our master fee schedule for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this was one that basically we, uh, look at whenever there are changes, and there were some state law changes with the adoption of the zoning ordinance in spring twenty twenty-one and any updates to the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, T A B C regulations amendments to FY twenty-two master fee schedule are needed. A summary of all changes are included in the staff report, however, key highlights of them are, we add fees for live work units, short-term rental, uh, registration, annual inspection, food truck inspection, adds late fees for non-residential stormwater permits and, and city alcohol license, adopts T A B C license and maximum local fees. One question that I did receive is, do we have a vacant building licensing? And yes, we do. Uh, we do have a vacant building registration, a vacant building inspection, and a vacant building registration late fee if you don't register your vacant building.
Have, have we increased that over the years?
No, it's, it's only sitting, um, the registration fee is like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then the inspection fee, um, I think I gave it to you.
Looking at now, the fifty dollars or one dollar per square foot, for a square foot, whichever is higher.
I think it's one, one ten cents or one cent.
One cent, yeah, point zero one cent.
A penny.
Yeah, penny, per square foot.
And when is the last time we, when is the last time we raised fees on it?
It's particular, the, the.
We haven't, we haven't, uh, raised fees since we, I mean, it's just been out since twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, something like that. I know I, I, I just get, I looked it up this morning for, for Ms. Benavides. Um, and we have about ten, I think we were just talking about it today, ten, ten businesses that are vacant, and we're looking at anything that's over fifty percent vacant.
Is that, is that figures in line with other, other cities?
I, I don't recall when we set it up, we, we, I know when we set it up, um, we made sure we were in alignment with other cities, but I couldn't tell you today, we haven't, we haven't adjusted the fee at all to, to raise it.
So man, I would like to consider you to look at that later to see if that fee needs to be raised for vacant buildings. It may incent some to help build them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes the consent item agenda. Item agenda, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item number two, briefings presentations. Uh, item A, receive a follow-up presentation concerning the city of Duncanville's current loud and raucous noise ordinance. Ordinance seventeen ninety-four, section one relating to citizen quality of life and obtain direction for the possibility of revamping the ordinance in the future. Interim chief, you lead me, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Since this is a very ambitious agenda tonight, I try to be brief. Last, uh, briefing we had on this was asked to bring back and see if there were some other objective, uh, means the other cities used. And I did get an email this, this morning, I think, as most of the council members know, from one of the council members. And I have been able to address some of those, but they're not in here. I'll run through this and then address what I can address thus far. So recap from the nineteenth, um, that's our current, uh, noise ordinance from ten to seven AM. We, we have some restrictions and it's, it's very discretionary. Uh, we included other best southwest cities, uh, loud, uh, noise ordinances, and then we talked about the disorderly conduct, uh, as it pertains to noise and forty-two oh one of the penal code. Requires notice and there's an eighty-five decibel reading threshold. So with that, I just wanted to give you a visual on when you're reading decibels. This is what the CDC puts out as far as the different levels. So that threshold is, you know, as you can tell, is, is not very high. Matter of fact, I would guess we're probably, with me speaking here tonight, we're probably at about a sixty-five, sixty to seventy, uh, decibel reading at this point in this room. So I gathered several different cities I found because they wanted us to go outside the best southwest city around. Uh, I thought Mesquite had an interesting ordinance that they fairly recently passed. And some of the things they had, they have some zone overlays, um, and some other things that were, were interesting. Uh, another city's, uh, ordinance that I thought was interesting was San Antonio's. They do something different, uh, with, and try to address some objectivity within their ordinance. Uh, they put things in there like administrative stop orders. After so many times, you know, you can seize whatever's causing the noise. And, you know, after the first time, uh, after a magistrate has, has ordered it seized, if they keep up, we can, they can do that. I'll tell you, with San Antonio's, if they've got the people to deal with this, don't go down there and make noise. Uh, they've, they've got a little bit of teeth in their ordinance. They even have the ability for the city to recoup costs of up to a thousand dollars for response. Rock Walls, they, they have one. Um, I looked at it, it's a little convoluted, but it adds some, some technical verbiage and that, that tends to get a little confusing, I thought. So I'm not sure that's, it's a good ordinance, but you, you guys may think otherwise. I included the ordinances in your packets. So our recommendation is to keep the discretion there. You know, a, as I mentioned before, we need to be able to try to work things out on a neighborly basis. Sometimes that's not possible, but we also need people to act as, um, complaining witnesses or witnesses if they want something to go forward. And sometimes that's just not the case. Sometimes we get calls that are anonymous calls on, on noise and we just can't really go much forward than that and try to mediate those, uh, calls and try to get people to turn them down just by our presence and, and speaking to them. So again, regardless of the council's desire, uh, to keep the status quo with our ordinance now, or for us to go back and take a look and, and mend things, or mend things to more your liking from what you've seen thus far. Now, the email I mentioned earlier from one of the councilmen, the question was asked, how many documented violations, several questions, how many citations written last year and what fines were received from those citations? So within last year, again, realize, it's a documented, we have our call types, we're somewhat limited, uh, for our CAD and RMS system, computer aided dispatch system. So we have minor disturbance, that can include noise disturbances. Uh, we don't have a good way to go back unless we read through every call sheet to go back and through if this was a noise complaint or if it was some other minor disturbance. Now, we'll tell you, we had about nine hundred of those. Now, given anonymous calls, given lack of complaining witnesses, given trying to work it out, of those nine hundred, we issued eleven citations. And we garnered just over thirteen hundred dollars in fines from those citations. So one of the things, or some of the things the, the councilman asked, and again, I think you guys were included on, at the council, were in our ordinance to remove, uh, the section that restricted the noises, uh, in a time period, so it's all the time. And that actually adds more discretion to us and the ability to us as we respond to calls, because now it's not just a very specified period of time. But it also lists some prohibitions, some other cities did that. They're per se prohibitions, which means these are not, th- these prohibitions are actual prohibitions, but they're not all inclusive. So that may be a possibility. And then there are some exemptions, uh, and, and some of the, some of this came from some of the ordinances that are provided from Mesquite, San Antonio, um, not sure if it came from Rockwall, and then an additional section, uh, that was provided by the councilman. Now, some of the thing, a couple of other things that I'll say, I have not had a chance to speak with Mr. Hager about this, um, and, and we could certainly look at it if that's the council's desire. But some of the things that I noticed in some of these ordinances that are in place, um, that are documented that may be desirable are very subjective language. How do we quantify what loud is? Uh, how do we quantify what excessive is to, to us? Uh, and these are just some examples. I mean, there, there may be ways to do that, but as we look through those and if that's the count, what the council's desire is, we, we can do that. So, Mr. Hager, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Any questions?
Mr. Contreras?
I understand your, your feelings about the discretion, thinking the discretion part in there to, to help kind of resolve the issue at hand. But I still think there'd be a wide variable between officers.
Sure.
On what would be acceptable to them, you know? So if you have a, a residence that, uh, if a business, if, if a business turned into something suddenly that generated music next to a residential neighborhood or loud noises of some sort, um, so the officer would have to go to that residence, stand in the yard and make a determination whether he or she found that offensive. And I don't, I, I just don't see how that would work, um, with consistency.
It is very difficult. So, you know, some of the things that we've seen in some locations, you know, we're starting to try to develop some, uh, more entertainment districts. Uh, we've got some in place that may need some mixed use already, and we're starting to see some of that. It does put us in a very difficult situation to be able to be, uh, uniform across the board. But there are some of those instances where, you, you know, uh, in, in studying penal code, studying law, sometimes you, you can't define, I mean, and we can define all across, but sometimes it's easier to know and see it than it is to sit back and define it for someone else. You know when it's a violation because it's so blatantly out there, so, but it can be difficult, yes.
You said, you said San Antonio, you're a little bit more aggressive than everyone else? Just give me, just.
Well, I, well, and let me, let me back, back you up. So I looked at three. Um, I mean, I probably could have gone, and I could still be researching. Uh, of those three, I looked at San Antonio was very aggressive. So it allows, uh, the recouping of, of, um, their response. It allows, um, it, some overlay as far as, um, different zones and times, if I'm not getting that confused with, um, Mesquite's. But one or both of them, but they did some other things where they also, if we go out to a, a call like this and somebody just, that, they don't want to identify themselves as the homeowner, the responsible party, they actually define how we can deem somebody's, and it's very, when I read it, I thought it was very liberal. You can actually deem a trespasser on their, on, in their ordinance as a responsible party. I, I think Mr. Hager might have some issue with that, but go ahead. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
So, did you mention as you're going to San Antonio that their ordinance empowers them to take the noise maker? Did I, did I hear you say that?
There is a provision that after so many times, you can go in and seize that. Now, obviously, there, there's, there's some steps that need to be taken, but it seemed to me that that was in place yesterday.
That be okay with you?
Well, um, if it's a violation of the ordinance, they have the right to seize the evidence. So now the real question is, do they have to get a warrant?
So I think certainly on the first time, it does require to go to a magistrate and make your case, but if you have to go out subsequent times, there's, there's some language in there, as I recall, that may make it a little bit easier.
habitual offense.
Mr. Coons?
So, uh, so I appreciate council entertaining these recommendations, just as far as amendments, and it's just proposed, uh, amendments and revisions. I just want council to know where this is coming from, because originally we were talking about, uh, amending, vamping the noise ordinance. And then the first, uh, briefing we had was mostly about the decibel levels. And so I was expecting more of a, a, a deeper discussion about the entire ordinance itself. And so, uh, a, a lot of this was just from, uh, talking to residents and just trying to get a feel for what are some of the, the, the main concerns residents have, uh, with the things that the ordinance doesn't address. And so, uh, and some of these are just, uh, more real specific prohibitions that people suggested or that were thought of. Again, they're just, they're proposed amendments, proposed revisions. Uh, but I, I did go back and look at some of these other ordinances as far as, uh, some of the specific prohibitions like the animals or the, the modified exhaust systems for automobiles. And so, uh, so that's when I went and looked at some of the other ordinances. And I did notice that our ordinance is pretty, I'm saying, short, I mean, it's.
Concise?
Yeah, concise, I guess that's, that's another word. Uh, and it provides a lot of opportunities for, for gray areas and subjectivity, so I thought. And it provides a lot of opportunities for gray areas and subjectivity, so I thought put more specificity in there that might allow you guys to, to deal with more specific situations. And I, I don't, is there a, a tool, I don't know, I can't remember if you addressed this the first time, is there a tool or something y'all use to measure decibel levels?
Yes, sir, there's a decibel reader, and we have a couple of actual devices. But we also have apps to try to be economical in, in what we do. And we can take those apps, and we also have a decibel meter calibrator. And we can take one of the devices that we have, take our apps, our phones, and we can get very close. So we do calibrate those yesterday. One other thing I'd like to mention, you, you mentioned, and, and it's in here about the loud animals. So it's not in our loud and raucous noise ordinance, but we do have that in our animal ordinance. So there's a prohibition to that. You know, I, I guess we could go through and clean that up a little bit if, if that was, were desired, but it is in another place.
And could you speak to the noise from automobiles, exhaust systems? I know, I know loud music is addressed in the ordinance, but not loud pipes.
So you're right. And, you know, I would say, unfortunately, given what we've been dealing with our last couple of years with catalytic converters, that's, you know, we, if, if we were going to put something like that in our ordinance, we would want to make an exemption and put some language in there that if you wake up in the morning and you find yourself victim of this type of crime, it's going to be pretty loud, so we're not going to hold you responsible in violation of this ordinance. You know, that's possible. Some cities, and, and I'd seen that in the first ones, I didn't want to just list the list of prohibitions and exemptions for each city that I researched. I think that gets to be a little much, but I think it was in your packets. So whatever the council desires, we can list some per se prohibitions and exemptions. That would probably be fairly easy, but just looking for some direction, I know we talked about this a couple of times.
Just a comment that we, we as a council need to consider modifying such an ordinance in terms of the burden it places on our law enforcement to enforce this, considering true crime versus incidence of annoyance, which is what noise is. Can our, do we want to burden our law enforcement officers 24 hours a day on whatever shift they go out in terms of responding to this type of issue? A valid customer complaint, a citizen complaint, but is this the burden of law enforcement that we want to place on our, on our, on our law enforcement force in considering making, giving more specificity to an ordinance which personally I consider to be acceptable as it stands? I just want to make that comment and see how you all feel about this. Mr. Contreras.
Well, the, we see they responded to 900 calls, right? For noise, so.
Think most of them have to do with noise, but the call type is rather ambiguous.
So I think we're already burdening them with, and I hate to call it a burden, because from the citizen's side, they're calling these in, the burden is having to be, have disruptive sound on your property. I have a house that's across I-20 from me. I live close to I-20, but it's across I-20, and one of the ones coming out of the south, I can hear their music in my backyard. That bothers me. I've never called it in, don't, haven't figured out what house it is yet, but, but.
Does the music stop after the curfew of time?
Not necessarily. But my, my point really is because I've learned to kind of live with it, but for those people that don't want to live with it, that they feel that they want to sit in their backyard or front yard in the evening, but music is at a point where it's, it's noticeable and disruptive, then there has to be some way for them to call and see if somebody agrees with that on, on the enforcement side. I think that's, that's already on the books, and that's in all these ordinances, essentially. I'm concerned right now mainly, when I, when I was employed by the city, I dealt with noises that were being generated from commercial buildings. It was a little bit different story, but it was equally annoying or aggravating for people to have to listen to that. But most of the complaints that I get are from residential homes that, that are just tired of hearing music generated from neighbors or businesses. And I, I can't, I don't think we should lose track of the fact that it's happening right now, they call in, they report it, and I don't think that's going to increase just because we have a little bit tougher ordinance. If anything, I think it'll help you all if you have a better point to.
So for my own edification, what's your response to this? Augmented or leave it as it is?
Oh, definitely augmented. I think, I think ours is archaic and ambiguous right now, that, that it offends people of reasonable sensibilities. Okay, now, each officer has to go to, take a class of psychiatry so they can understand that better when they go out. I think the officers can use reasonable judgment. I've seen them interact with the public. But the ordinance is, is too broad. I, I think it needs some more specificity in it. And, and actually, and I'm probably the odd man out here, but I'm, I'm, I've always leaned towards decibel levels, but I don't see in these ordinances, San Antonio seems to point in that direction, but I don't see it listed anywhere. They call it enumeration.
There, in some of the zones, whether it's Mesquite or San Antonio, I can't recall, but some of the zones they have, they, they do, I think, have some levels out there that apply at certain times in certain zones and things like that.
And I'm, I'm careful when I say that, Mayor, because to your point, that, that will be more burdensome to the officers if they have to go out with the decibel readers or the apps and, and do that. I'd, I'd hope that we could continue having civil conversation between the officer and the offender to get to a point, and, and sometimes to the person that is the complaint, to get to some point of mutual agreement.
I'm looking at our time factor here, and I'm trying to get an understanding of consensus from the council. Do we need to send this back to our law enforcement to have this augmented and amended? Or where do you want to go with this?
Me personally, I'm, I'm good with it, and I'm just.
Good with what?
Good with it the way it is.
As it is?
Yes, sir. And my question would be, I know we've got a lot of folks that have been moving into the city from different areas and are probably used to different things. And so when you go out and, and meet these folks with one time education on how, you know, does that work? And, well, does it work? Just because something may or may not work, I mean, we shouldn't try.
Well, I mean, you know, you educate them, so it's.
I saw something interesting when I was researching Mesquite. When Mesquite passed there, they, they kind of, you know, put in a lot of the conversation we're hearing right now. So they, they put an educational piece together that said, we'll get there when we can if you have an issue like this.
I need to cut this conversation short. We're coming up on seven o'clock. We have three public hearings out there. We have a lot of citizens, I don't know how many, I don't, I don't know, but we have three public hearings. We need to stay on schedule. If we need to come back to these briefing items at the end of city council, we most certainly can, but in deference to our citizens that are out there that have come for the public hearings, we need to be out there and ready to go at seven. So if you want to, I think, I'm, I'm seeing difference of opinion here, so let's move this into, and have to stick around to the end of council, Mr. Chief Levigne. We'll move this discussion later. Yes, sir.
And I'm fine with the hybrid on the other item that I requested, I'll wait till next time.
Oh, on item B?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. Thank you very much. Table, item B, please make a note. And city secretary, we will discuss calendar out there at the end, I'm sorry. But there are, there's significant pieces in that calendar we have to discuss, and those are special city council meetings, discuss re-district. So that is essential, it's not just a brush aside calendar, it's very important. All right, folks, if we please, as soon as possible, if you need a quick break, please do so.
Time, time.
Our time is 6:58.
Welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Duncanville on the 16th of November the year 2021, timestamp 7:07. We have a very full agenda tonight. Our apologies for looking like we're a little unorganized at the moment. It's because we wanted to do everything we could possibly to get out here at seven o'clock because we do have some public hearings. And in deference to our citizens, we want to stay on as much time possible, as possible. So for that reason, we are moving some agenda items from their original position to a later position so that we could keep on time and, and get underway as soon as possible. So thank you very much for your understanding and your consideration. Our next item on our agenda is the invocation, and Mayor Protem, Mr. Patrick Harvey, is going to give us the invocation. Please rise.
Will you join with me in prayer? Dear God, I have no father, your name is worthy to be praised from the rising of the sun until the going down of the same. We acknowledge that through the power of your word, you created all things, and by the power of your word, all things are held together. We also realize and recognize that you are the giver of every good and perfect gift, and you are the source of all wisdom and understanding. So it is in that vein that we look to you and ask you as humbly as we know how that you would lead, guide, and direct us as we deliberate this wonderful community's business. We pray that you would be in the midst. We pray that you would lead, guide, and direct us, and that everything that is done and said tonight glorify you, strengthen this community, so that we might continue to be a beacon of light in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. For this, we ask in Jesus' name and forth, sacred prayer. Amen.
Please join me in pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation of the good, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texans, one state, the government, one indivisible. Thank you. Please be seated. The next item on the agenda are reports, and the first one is for me, the mayor's report. Four quick items, just want to give you a quick update. If you were paying attention to some of the publicity that the city of Duncanville was given by Southern Methodist University, SMU, as we call it, at their football game on Saturday. It was a very enjoyable experience. SMU did win over the University of Central Florida. We had a great time out there. And Governor Abbott's video that he prepared for us was shown, as well as myself and Connie Wallace, who was representing Superintendent Dr. Mark Smith from the Independent School District. We were both taken on the field and put on camera during the first ESPN timeout. It was a really remarkable experience and was very enjoyable. And I know that council member Mark Cooks was there to join us as well, and I saw Mr. Clay Mancell, and I saw Mr. Ramey there, and of course, city manager was there as well. It was a great time, and we will be looking at the possibility of any future promotions in that regard. Secondly, Saturday night, I had the opportunity, along with Mr. Cooks as well, to be present for the, what should we call it, dedication or of the Phil McNeely Court in, at Duncanville High School. Mr. Mc, Coach McNeely has over 700 wins, been with the city for a very long time, and is still currently a trustee with the Duncanville Independent School District Board. So that is now designated Phil McNeely Court next time you're there. It was a great time to be there. Also want to say that we had a great turnout for the Veterans Resource Fair on, that was Thursday, Veterans Day. There were, what, some, some 70-some vendors there, from what I understand, and we had a great turnout. And thanks to Mr. Cliff Boyd and, and council member Mark Cooks for putting that organization, that development together. That was our first annual recognition of Veterans Resource Fair, and presumably it's going to be going on for some time in the future. Final item in the mayor's report, I just want to say that our next coffee with the mayor is December 1st, 8:30 in the morning, in the senior center. Everybody is welcome to come. We have some coffee and some high cholesterol things for you to consume, but it's, it's an open discussion. We just sit down and we just chat informally. So again, it's the 1st of December at 8:30 in the morning in the senior center. Now, we usually, I usually do that once a month, but because of the holidays, we're putting November and December together into one, and that will be December 1st. So thank you very much for that. So turning over to any city council members' reports. Mr. Cooks, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, citizens of Duncanville. I just want to echo the mayor's comment about Veterans Day. Dallas College, as well as the Roly-Roy Club and the city of Duncanville hosted their very first Veterans Day event. Great event. Our mayor spoke as well, talked about the history of Veterans Day. So I want to thank Noah Garcia of our public, no, of our recreation department, Superintendent Noah Garcia, city manager, great job with Noah Garcia, working with Dallas College and all the other vendors to make it happen. So thank Noah Garcia in that regard. The other thing is Meet, Connect, and Learn, we're not having it this month, but as the mayor just stated, I want to do the same thing for Meet, Connect, and Learn, which is a monthly event that we host with different topics. So next month, we will host a Meet, Connect, and Learn, and we will tell you more about the guests coming up next time. So that concludes my report. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other council members' reports? Okay, seeing none, city manager's report. I remembered this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. It's going to be brief, just want to give an update. Fire, the Duncanville Fire Department has been working closely with the Dallas Fire Department to address concerns on the auto assist agreement with them, and we have had several meetings and will continue to work with them on how we will respond to issues as they arise in the Dallas portion of the area in which our group has been serving. As many of you may have saw, seen when you were coming in this evening, the fire department has a new apparatus. It's here. Chief Rhodey believes the apparatus will be put into service within the week, and so he is excited about their new truck. Parks and Recreation, the city will be hosting our annual Christmas parade and tree lighting event on Saturday, December 4th, starting at 6:00 PM. The parade will travel from Freeman and Wheatland Road to Main Street, turning north to the downtown area. Our mayor and city council will be lighting the Christmas tree in Memorial Park, followed by several Duncanville ISD school choirs performing on stage. Santa Claus will make a traditional appearance at Ben Franklin with photograph opportunities. There will also be food and drinks available, along with a bounce house and fun for the entire family. Also, on, on Monday, November 22nd, Sonny and Kate Dykes will be hosting the third annual Turkey Blitz at the Duncanville Phil House. Families in need of some assistance this year will be able to pick up their meal that will include turkey and the trimmings at 10:00 AM until they run out at the contactless drive-up event. Visit duncanvillephillhouse.com for more information. That concludes my report.
Thank you, city manager. Before moving on to the next item, proclamations and presentations, there's a little housekeeping that we need to do. This is the rearrangement of the agenda as a result of trying to come out here as quickly as possible for time purposes. We are going to, apparently, on item 2A, talking about the city of Duncanville's noise ordinance, we're going to be continuing that discussion at the end of the city council meeting, seeing how that goes. Executive session is also going to be at the end of our city council meeting. Item 4N, as in November, on the consent item, that item is being tabled, pending additional And item under individual consent items. And item under individual consent items, five D, as in David, item five D is being tabled, pending additional information and requests from other parties outside of the city. And I think that covers all the changes in the agenda. Yes, sir. Oh, right, 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 right. Item under consent agenda item four L, as in Lima, this item is being moved from the consent agenda to individual consideration, and we decided that we would do that at the, what did we decide? I forgot. Beginning or the end of individual?
At the end.
At the end of individual consent. Let me make a note of that, please. Anything else I've forgotten or need taken care of? Okay.
Thank you. Good.
All right. Moving on to item two on the agenda, proclamations and presentations, recognition of Aretha Pharoah Benavides on being selected for the 2021 Class of Academy Fellows by the National Academy of Public Administration. We have a proclamation. It's going to be read by Rita Cooks. She is the Policy Advocacy Director from Representative Carl Sherman's office. We're pleased to be able to have her with us tonight and for good recognition of our great city manager.
Hello, Aretha. I've known you forever, so I'm happy to be reading this. All right. Whereas Aretha R. Pharoah Benavides has been selected as a member of the 2021 Class of Academy Fellows by the National Academy of Public Administration, whereas the academy helps government leaders build more effective and transparent organizations, and Academy Fellows are recognized for their work in the fields of public administration and policy, Mrs. Pharoah Benavides is one of the only thirty-nine individuals nationwide to be named a 2021 Academy Fellow. Whereas this esteemed public employee became Duncanville City Manager in February 2021, and she has brought to her role nearly three decades of professional experience at all levels of government. She previously served as City Manager in Glen Heights, Texas, and Petersburg, Virginia, and she held multiple civic positions in Washington, D.C., New Mexico, California, Maryland, and Illinois. Whereas highly engaged in her community, Mrs. Pharoah Benavides has served on a number of intergovernmental boards, including as Secretary Treasurer of the Riverside Regional Jail Authority, Chair of Carter Youth Correctional Center, and Vice Chair of South Central Wastewater Authority. She has also participated in the International City County Management Association, as well as the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, which she served as president. Whereas Mrs. Pharoah Benavides has received the 2017 Marks of Excellence Awards and the ENF BPI Young Public Administrator Award, she holds a bachelor's degree in political science from Southern University and a master's degree in public administration from Howard University. And whereas through her expertise, vision, and commitment to public service, Aretha Pharoah Benavides has earned the lasting respect of her peers and fellow citizens, and she is indeed deserving of this prestigious honor. Now therefore, be it resolved that Aretha R. Pharoah Benavides be congratulated on her induction into the 2021 Class of Academy Fellows, and let she be extended sincere best wishes for continued success. Carl O. Sherman, State Representative, District 29.
Wow. All right. Do you have anything to say?
She's too shy.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for that, and we are indeed fortunate and blessed to have Ms. Pharoah Benavides as our city manager, as evidenced by the recognition she's achieved with this national organization. Our next item on the agenda is the mayor's champions of the city. As is our, whoo! As is our practice to recognize the contributions to our city by city champions. For this evening, our city champions are Mr. and Mrs. Ken and Pat Weaver. Please come forward. I've known these individuals for a great deal of time, much longer than my time spent here in the city in terms of council and on the boards and commission. Ken and I had an opportunity to work together. At one time, he was my boss. That's enough. I took orders really, really well, and I learned an incredible amount under his supervision as a, he was the chief financial officer for the Department of Defense Agency that he and I were both working for, and it was a great opportunity to serve under him and during that time as well. After his retirement, I know he became part of our city, and I'm going to include that. And for this young lady right here, being by his side for all those years. I always get choked up about this junk. Okay. In recognition for the long-term commitments to and investments in our community, Mr. and Mrs. Ken Weaver are hereby recognized as champions of the city. Mr. Weaver was a dedicated city council member in the past, and he remains deeply involved in our community. He represented our community for several years on the Board of Directors for the Methodist Health System and served as the treasurer. Mrs. Weaver is actively involved in our senior center and is a strong supporter of our first responders. She serves on the board of the Duncanville Community Theater and is the Duncanville Director for the Citizens Emergency Response Team, known as CERT. Together, they are seen at all public community events stationed for emergency first aid. They are also members of the Citizens on Patrol, and Pat and Ken both belong to the Duncanville Rotary Club, where they lead the patriotic flag program throughout our city, and are members of the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce. They are both quick to assist wherever they are needed. As mayor of the city of Duncanville, I ask our residents to join me in congratulating Mr. and Mrs. Ken Weaver on this memorable occasion as champions of the city.
We really appreciate this. We do enjoy working for the city of Duncanville. We have done it since he retired, and anything that we can do to help and make this city better, we're there.
I sat at this counter for a number of years, and we love Duncanville, and thank you very much.
Thank you to you all. Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful November 2021 Business Beautification Award and plaque, and it's going to Champions Cove, located at 1600 South Main Street. Normally, we would stand out there, and someone from Champions Cove would be here to receive it. Unfortunately, they're unable to provide someone tonight, so I will read the proclamation from here. Whereas the city of Duncanville is committed to improving the physical quality of community of life, and whereas the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board was established to promote this commitment, and whereas the mission of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board is to empower Duncanville citizens and businesses to take responsibility for enhancing their community environment, and whereas each quarter, the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board recognizes one commercial property within the city for significant improvements to the exterior portion of the property, landscape improvements, and/or long-term maintenance of the property that exemplifies high-quality standards. And whereas Champions Cove, located at 1600 South Main Street, has been selected as a Business Beautification Award recipient for November 21. I, Barry Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, do hereby urge all citizens to join me in congratulating Champions Cove in commending the business for contributing to the beautification of our city. That's the proclamation, and going along with that will be this plaque to one of the representatives at a later time. The next item on the agenda is the proclamation designating November 6, 2021, as Arbor Day in Duncanville. Councilmember Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Bar. Welcome to see. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that special day to set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, provide food and human consumption, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of youth and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Duncanville has earned the rank of Tree City USA by the Arbor Foundation for nineteen consecutive years. Now therefore, on the behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 6 as Arbor Day. And we have Mr. Stevenson up here to accept the award, so.
Thank you. The next proclamation we have is a proclamation recognizing November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. Councilmember Cooks, please. Accepting the proclamation is Christina Cox. Christina Cox. She is not here. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
All right, proclamation. Whereas August 3, 1990, President George H.W. Bush declared the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Thereafter, commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month, and whereas the president authorized federal, state, and local governments, groups, and organizations, and the people of the United States to observe such month with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activity. And whereas this commemorative month aims to provide platform for Native American people in the United States to share their cultural, traditional music, graph, dance, ways, the concept of life. And whereas this gives Native American people the opportunity to express their community to their city, county, state, official, their concern and solution for building bridges of understanding and friendship in local areas. Now therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 as National Heritage Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooks. Moving on to item F, proclamation designating November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday. Councilmember Cooks and accepting Mr. Garcia.
Whereas small business is a cornerstone of our free enterprise system, and since the birth of this country has represented opportunity, independence, and the fulfillment of dreams for generations of Americans. And whereas small business owners who work long hours, juggling family and career responsibilities, and serving as community volunteers are integral to our country's prosperity and to the vibrancy of our community, these entrepreneurs are fundamental to our economy. Through the opportunities offered by the men and women who own and operate small businesses, many of our citizens are able to pursue their dreams of a better life. And whereas to recognize Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 27, a day to celebrate and support small businesses that create jobs, boost the economy, invigorate neighborhoods in our community, and to encourage shop local, and whereas the city of Duncanville wishes to recognize small businesses for the important role they play in keeping our local economy strong. Now therefore, on behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, I do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Duncanville, and urge all our citizens to join with us in this observance as we celebrate the accomplishments of small business owners and their employees, and encourage the development of new small businesses. And accepting this is Augustine Garcia, Economic Development Director.
We've gone to item number three on the agenda, citizens' input. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda items may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. Two-minute comments may be taken from the citizen comments present here tonight on any topic, and individuals who desire to address the city council have filled out a card indicating their desire to speak or indicating their desire to make a comment on something on the agenda or off the agenda. I will also take note that individuals have submitted items for me to read in association with the citizen comment period. Now, we are also in a hybrid mode, so City Secretary, are there any individuals that are online that wish to have a citizen comments?
No, sir. We're good.
All right. Thank you very much. So moving on, just one note, looking at the citizen public comment cards that have been submitted to me, I have four that deal with a special use permit, which is an item on the agenda. Rather than having those individuals come forward during the citizen comment period, I'm going to reserve those individuals to come forward during the public hearing time because that puts it together in terms of cogency. So if those four individuals, I will call you up when it comes time for the public hearing on that particular item. So I do have several citizen comments here. The first thing, I will call forward those individuals that are present who wish to speak. The first person is Marcy Buck. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marcy Buck. I live at 1310.
Move the microphone so we can hear you better.
Oh, you can't hear me. Probably my mask, too, right?
There we go. It's fine, too. Thank you.
Marcy Buck, 1310 Green Hills Road, Duncanville, Texas. And what else do you need? It's time for me to talk.
You have two minutes, yes.
I do not like talking, guys, so basically, I'm here to state that I hope that the Ladd property, the entire donation of the forty-two acres that was gifted to the city of Duncanville by Mr. Ladd, should be used as a nature preserve. We should honor his wishes. We can educate residents of Duncanville, as well as surrounding cities, about the important balance between man and nature, and there's research that's been proven to give that quality of life is enhanced in cities with green areas. And we have benefits already from the residents here in the city are getting together for common good. We're getting out, we're meeting new people, we're improving the community without any monetary compensation, we're just taking our personal time to help better the environment and better the community. And so what I'm hoping that we can do is hopefully take that property and not divide it for development, but keep it as a natural state, and we have grants that we can utilize to help improve that, which is no cost to the city. And especially based on, with the Arbor Day Foundation and the city of trees, let's keep with that standing. We don't have that standing if we bulldoze down the trees to build more buildings that stay vacant. So I really don't like public speaking. I'm just here.
You're doing fine.
I'm just here to, you know, make awareness and hope that maybe we can educate the kids I was just here to, you know, make awareness and hope that maybe we can educate the kids in the future and the adults as well and look to other cities that have preserves that have educated kids and we can build STEM-type situation. We can improve the environment. I mean, look at what's on the news these days, the BBC, we're always talking about the green, going green and the importance of all that, the environment, so I'm kind of done right now.
Good.
But I appreciate you guys listening and I'll speak more, but today I'm done. Thank you.
Right on time. Thank you. The next card I have is E.J. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is E.J. Sharp. I live on Swan Ridge Drive since 1995. I am here to discuss the proposal in front of you tonight for the erosion problem that we've had on Ten Mile Creek. Fifteen years ago, you put up the bag wall close to 20 years ago. About 15 years ago, there was a failure in the wall. I called the city and I think it was corrected under warranty. I'm not positive about that, but it was. Three years ago, contacted the city of some minor erosion problems. Nothing had happened until six months ago when we had the large rain and we had to blow out in the retaining wall behind my house and three other locations along Ten Mile Creek. The erosion is an ongoing problem. It's been six months and it's been growing. I have a workshop out back that I think I'm going to lose because of this erosion. It's going back towards the creek and I have two dogs that weigh about 50 pounds and I've got a hole in the backyard that's four foot around and 10 to 15 foot deep and have to put up a temporary fence to protect my animals. I've got five trees back there that they may not make it if it continues and it will definitely will not be under the Ann Arbor comments that's going on here tonight. I want to thank Mr. McDermott for coming out late one evening to look at the problem when I finally called. I know this report that you're voting on tonight is for designing the game plan and the scope of work to get done. I just wish you'd put together a ballpark date that we can look forward to. I don't want to hear next year because I realize you got to do plans and the construction's got to happen, but I'm afraid what's going to happen with the weather between now and then. And but, you know, and I'd like to find out what you're going to, you know, have a meeting with the citizens, the engineers, the city to let us know what's going to happen.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much.
Sorry, sir. Thank you.
And we do invite you to talk it over with our staff. The next item is Jay Reese Edwards, the next person I should say, Jay Reese Edwards.
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Jay Reese Edwards and I live at 226 Mazzell and I want to thank all of you for your service. So I come here tonight as a concerned citizen with our code's enforcement and policies. So I just I live at 226 Mazzell and a year and a half ago I started a COVID project to restore a small, a small portion of my property to where it looked like before development of Duncanville, to have a small Blackcomb Prairie portion of my front yard. And so I planted a little bit of native grasses and flowers to exemplify, you know, what of some of the plants that grew in this area. Well, around two weeks ago, I got a citation from the city of Duncanville for that because to be honest with you, you know, it, you know, flowers are fed to grasses and it's obviously over 12 inches tall. What I'm asking for the city of Duncanville to consider is those citizens like myself who are outside the box speakers, who are, you know, for the environment and for, you know, showing, showing, you know, more than just manicure lawns, to consider a permit, a permit-based solution for people who want to think outside the box to show more than just St. Augustine and manicure lawns. Also, I would like to address thanks to Dr. Mark, to Mr. Burnett and Jeremy Kurtz to do a small plug for the Ladd property so that we can think of not only what's good for our citizens now at a property, at a property-based and sales tax revenue-based economy, but also what is, what is this land going to look like for our children and our grandchildren? So thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. The next item that I have for someone present is John Wentz. And please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Wentz. I live 402 Cardinal Creek in the Swan Ridge neighborhood. I come today to support the use of the Ladd property as a green space and undeveloped and I would oppose commercial and residential development on that acreage. I think that there's a number of people on the council that, that, that would oppose a measure, any measure that would permit commercial and residential development of the Ladd property. If we have commercial or residential development of the Ladd property, I think that it would be short-sighted and in the long run would not enhance the quality of life in our city. Duncanville needs a bigger tax base, there's no question about that. However, when you look around in the entire city, there's a lot of shabby-looking businesses and vacant storefronts along Main Street, Camp Wisdom and along the service roads of Highway 67 and it should be easy to find properties that we could renovate and improve the, the tax revenue from those places without destroying a, a property like the Ladd property. If one, you know, development, for instance, one development plan was for high-dollar houses, that it would only have a short-term benefit and green space would have a longer-term benefit for the citizens now and in the future. So anyways, that's what I would just like to leave it at that and thank you. I've been a resident here in Duncanville for 26 years. I just want to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have several written citizen comments that have been submitted and I will read First one is from Jane Hyman, 1002 Greenway Circle, 75137. Dear Mr. Gordon and Mr. Vera Cruz, I writing to you concerning the development or preservation of the Ladd property. As a Duncanville taxpayer, I'm in favor of preserving this tract of land. I realize the development of the property will bring in much-needed tax revenue, however not developing the property and designating it as a preserve will provide many intangible benefits. Some of these tangible, some of these benefits include, one, the preserve will be an amenity that will encourage families with young children to live here. Nearby communities such as Grand Prairie, Cedar Hill and Arlington have hike slash bike trails and natural areas for the public to enjoy. Two, if a contiguous trail is built connecting the Ladd land with Waterview Park and Harrington Parks, runners and walkers from not only Duncanville but other communities will drive here and use these trails. Knowing runners, many like to stop for coffee or lunch after their run. This will benefit many local businesses. Take note of Cedar Ridge Preserve. I ran on those trails in the middle to late 90s before people knew it existed. Now with the invention of social media, people are coming from as far as Fort Worth to walk, run or hike on these trails. There are so many vacant properties in Duncanville. I'm sorry, this is number three. There are so many vacant properties in Duncanville. Why not redevelop those areas? In fact, many of these vacant properties are in highly visible areas that are conducive to development. Four, having a preserve will provide educational opportunities for children as well as adults. Children need to learn to take care of the few natural areas we have left. They also need to learn to respect the land by disposing of trash properly and recycling. Five, this can be a place where anyone can go and disconnect from a busy and stressful world. Spending time in a beautiful place has many health benefits for all ages. Six, having a preserve will enhance the city's reputation and show other communities that this is a forward-thinking community. I realize that I am older, however, a preserve with trails is very attractive to millennials and really all groups. This is a piece of land that is driven by constantly yet seems to go unnoticed. When the possibility of turning this piece of land into a preserve is mentioned, many of the individuals are overwhelmingly in favor of it. I hope you will consider the points mentioned above when voting on this issue. Thank you for hearing me out. Next item is from a Betty Taylor, no address indicated. The citizens of Duncanville have taken a poll and most, if not all, would like for this land to remain as is. Given the unprecedented times we are living, it makes no sense to build $400,000 homes. The citizens are very adamant on what they would like to, like see happen and that is this property to remain as a preservation. Next item is from... I have an email address at J.F. Davis. I currently live in Greenbrier and have since 1992. I am against any short-term rental units such as Airbnb. My reasons align with others in opposition. Next item is from Thomas Lackey, 1818 Seabrook Drive. I respectfully request that the council consider the following points regarding the Ladd property and its ultimate fate. First, please remember that the property is not costing the city anything at the moment. Developing the property for housing is problematic for the following reasons. One, the state has already limited the amount that property taxes can be increased. This kind of limitation has been in place in Houston for a long time. Please consider that any housing, no matter its cost, may not generate revenue for the city in any meaningful way. The Rice University Kinder Institute for Urban Research has produced scholarly research on how the state's property tax reform will impact cities. There are many other credible articles that discuss this. Two, an argument can be made that once a housing development reaches the end of its first maintenance cycle for sewers, lights and streets, it ceases to add revenue to the city. The cost of maintenance outweighs Duncanville's share of the development's property taxes. Three, repurposing the deteriorated parts of town is what I hear is a priority from Duncanville residents over and over and over at town halls, conversation with neighbors or impromptu encounters at the grocery store. It is harder, is it harder and does it require more innovation for our economic development staff and our city leaders to reuse and repurpose our existing developments rather than build new? Yes, can it be done? Yes, has it been done? It's been tried in every metropolitan area in the United States and beyond, often in inner ring suburbs like ours with many success stories and towns very similar to ours. Just poke around on Google and you'll see a lot of reputable news resources discussing this. When was the last time Duncanville got a nice write-up into Dallas.com? Was it for a new strip mall or subdivision? No, it was for the opening of Mud Hook in an existing building on Main Street. And the individual gives the URL. We aren't, in my opinion, competing with Cedar Hill and DeSoto for chain retail and more tract housing and all of that. We are competing with ourselves. Do we try to take the inherent charm of the city to a new level by coming up with unique, innovative, sustainable ideas for a city or do we continue to look at New Starbucks as a zenith of our potential? That's two minutes for this individual that goes on for another two paragraphs. This is public information and can be read once it gets posted. I was just handed another card. This is in association with an agenda item of public hearing, so we will take that at that appropriate time in the public hearing. Next citizen comment. This is from, in the email address, Wendy King, no address indicated. When the Ladd family gave this property to the city, they had no intention for the city to use this land for more houses or businesses. This land was to be preserved for everyone to enjoy its natural beauty for years and years to come. Please don't ruin one of the few things we have left that we can all enjoy. If you want to do something with this property, make a park with some hiking or biking trails so more of our residents could enjoy this wonderful property. Thank you for your consideration. Next item is from Dr. Melinda J. Velez, Greenbrier Estates, no address indicated. Hi, I would like the following comments to be read at the next city council meeting. I have lived in Duncanville since 2004 and have watched with sadness the islands of nature surrounded by housing and business to be destroyed for the purpose of adding commercial businesses. Residents have complained of coyotes and bobcats getting their small pets. Where are these, where are these animals to go and what are they to eat when their wildlife habitat has been destroyed? We as humans have encroached on the land of these wild animals. If you enjoy bird watching, observing butterflies, native plants and other wild creatures without driving miles outside the city limits, these areas of wildlife refuge are irreplaceable. It's wonderful to see these wild creatures in their natural habitat and if we leave some remnants of their habitat, we can still enjoy nature in our own city. There are plenty of empty lots that can be developed without destroying a potential wildlife preserve. A wildlife preserve will attract many more residents and visitors to an area than another gas station or strip mall. Please save this wildlife area. Once it's gone, it cannot be replaced. The next item is from Robert Crawford in, I'm sorry, it's, there's, the initials at the bottom are different than the individual's email address, but the email address is Robert Coming from NYC, I'm going to pronounce that as Mysee, I'm not sure. I am requesting that this be read at tomorrow's meeting and I was unable to attend due to work obligations. My name is Mysee, that's NYC for the record, Crawford. I have lived in Duncanville of 13 years. In the past year, I have had the pleasure to visit the Ladd property hidden jewel here. My understanding is that Mayor Gordon and others have considered the possibility of placing $400,000 homes on this area so that tax dollars could help all citizens. The city has consistently shown a gross mismanagement of tax dollar appropriation. I recall a Main Street project, a splash pad and increased city offerings, none of which have transpired. Now the leaders are proposing that we develop a property that was gifted to the city by the generous Ladd family. I say no, leave the property as is and do not develop it. Councilman Kuntz has done a fantastic job of bringing attention to the property and I, along with others, appreciate his care for the property. Developing the land would only benefit the developers and possibly the mayor. This question, this raises a question of why the sudden interest in development and what is there to gain? The Ladd property has been left untouched for all these years. Leave it alone, do not develop. We as citizens will take care of the property. We don't need tax dollars that your proposed development would bring. Develop elsewhere and leave the Ladd property alone. Next item from Sherri Sanders, 723 Villa Creek. I would like to respectfully request consideration of the city council to preserve the gifted land at Daniel Dale in Santa Fe. More green space is needed, not more homes. I live within walking distance of this area and would appreciate having an ARE, that is a typo, but that's what it is, and R, that I could walk without cars whizzing by me. Sherri Sanders, 723 Villa Creek. This is an email from Myra Lummis, no address indicated. Please keep the Ladd property as it is. Wildlife lives there. Before we know it, all the beautiful, natural and beautiful land will be taken by houses and commercial real estate. We need to preserve what we can. Please leave it alone. Next item is from Lisa Hartman. Address included. I am unable to be at the city council meeting because I am sick, but I want to make it known that I'd like the land to be used as a nature preserve. My name is Lisa Hartman and I live at 727 North Horn Street, Duncanville, Texas, 75116. Thank you for letting me voice my opinion. Sincerely, Lisa Huggins-Hartman. Next item is from Denise Nguyen. No address indicated in the email. Please have my comments read at Tuesday's meeting. I have lived in Duncanville since 1976, except for 10 years away for college in my early adult life. I've lived in my current home since 1994. I raised my children here. I shop and eat locally as much as possible, supporting the small businesses that we have. I'm connected with multiple Duncanville pages and groups on social media to try and stay informed about the city I love and yet I have no idea until about a year ago about the Ladd land that was gifted to the city for educational resources. It is my understanding that some members of the city council are against having this land used as a nature preserve. I want the council to know they want this land used as a nature preserve and no part of it developed for homes, businesses or anything else. This voting citizen wants this green space to be preserved. We don't need more homes, chicken places, dollar stores or nail salons. We need this land preserved as green space. Since Duncanville is 95% developed, this Ladd property is the last chance for the city to save a small natural area, for our families to have a place to hike and connect with nature quite literally in the middle of the city. I'd love to be able to walk this area and maybe see otters, egrets, turtles and foxes, but any development will threaten the existence of these creatures that are already there. I don't want more homes filled with people who will drive to Cedar Hill or Arlington to shop and eat. I want this land to remain the green space that it already is. Lastly, please use the portion of the budget that is, one, perenns, revitalizing what we already have and, two, perenns for attracting new businesses to be used for just that. No part of that budget should be used for promoting development of the land, of the Ladd land. Denise Nguyen. should be used for promoting development of the Land, of the Lad land. Denise Nguyen. Next item is from Kadim R. Collins, no address indicated. I hope all is well. I would like to submit the following question slash comment to be read during tonight's meeting. As it relates to the ongoing discussion on whether or not to develop the Lad property, I ask the following. One, has there been ample research conducted that has produced evidence of a need to develop the area? Two, has there been research done to quantify the type of amenities systems want within the city? Three, is there any consideration to develop the land to a fully enhanced nature preserve or park akin to the Cedar Hill State Park? Four, does Duncanville currently have a nature preserve within the city limits? End of enumeration. If not already conducted, I believe there should be ample research done to justify next steps for the land. Data-driven decisions are often easiest to explain and rationalize. Next item from Ernest J. Sharp, 402 Swanbridge Drive. My husband would like to address the council tonight concerning agenda item that concerns our property, Agenda Item 10 Mile Creek Erosion Project. Next item is from Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. Please have the mayor as designate read my public comments below. Reconsent Agenda Item 4E, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Terms and Conditions of Professional Services Agreement PSA Number 21-052. How much are the late fees for the June 18-21 PSA Number 21-052 for interim finance director services and SGR? Per Page 84 of 486 of November 16 City Council Agenda, Consent Item 4E, Jennifer Oder, Budget Administrator, states that the council needs to approve the 53K for services rendered in September 2021. Page 86 of 486, Number 6 states, city will be billed weekly for the previous week's work and any travel housing reimbursement. Payment will be due within 14 days of each billing. Why wasn't this PSA presented to the council at the September 7 or September 27 meetings to avoid late fees? Do these late fees jeopardize the city's GFOA standing? Next item. From Juan Carlos Rodriguez. I'm sorry, it's the email address, a different name. I'll start out. My name is Alice Rodriguez. I live at 1207 Wellington Drive. I would like to take another opportunity to voice my fervent support for designating the entirety of the Lad land as a nature preserve. Doing so will allow all Duncanville residents to enjoy its natural beauty and will honor the spirit in which the land was donated. Commercial or residential development, regardless of whether they are $400,000 homes or not, will certainly exclude the vast majority of citizens from being able to visit. The land was not gifted in order for the city to exploit it for tax revenue, nor for one of the last tiny slivers of public land to be defiled from its natural state. Please cease any further discretion of developing the land in anything other than a nature preserve. That concludes the citizen comments. Moving on to item number four on the agenda is the consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the items, and I will also note once again that item... 4L for Lima has been moved to Items for Individual Consideration, and Item 4N, as in Nora, has been tabled. City Secretary.
4A, consider a resolution authorizing the fourth renewal option with Shawnee Mission Tree Service, Inc., DBA Arbor Master Tree Service using the City of Grapevine Contract Number 454-2017 for tree maintenance for an estimated amount up to $85,000. For all other pricing terms and conditions of contract 454-2017 remain unchanged. 4B, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of an inter-local agreement by and between the City of Duncanville and Region 8 Education Service Center through a program called, program known as Interlocal Purchasing System, TIPS. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing purchase of library materials from, books from Broadart Company through the Co-op Texas Smart Buy Contract Number 715-M2 with an estimated expenditure amount of $65,000. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing the annual procurement for the Senior Mill Program with Visiting Nurse Association of Texas using Interlocal Cooperative Contract with the City of Grand Prairie Contract Number 17124 with an estimated amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 2022. 4E, consider a resolution authorizing the terms and conditions of Professional Services Agreement PSA Number 21-052 for interim finance director services and amount not to exceed $53,000 from strategic government resources. 4F, consider a resolution authorizing the procurement of water bill printing and mailing services with Data Pros LLC and the unit amounts bid through the City of Allen Contract Number 219-6-61 with an annual estimated expenditure of $119,000. 4G, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of emergency medical supplies from Valtry Medical Products, Inc. through the City of Medellotian Contract 2020-28 for the unit price bid with an estimated expenditure amount of $75,000. 4H, consider a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Duncanville and Dallas County to provide food establishment inspections with a minimum of two, one every six months. 4I, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of Professional Engineering Services Agreement PSA-21-3220011 for engineering consulting services, design of 10 Mile Creek Erosion Control Improvements with Burgess and Niple, Inc. in the proposed amount of $165,060. 4J, consider a resolution authorizing the third renewal of the term contract for IFB Number 18-052 Street Sweeping Services from Sweeping Services of Texas Operating LP of Hurst, Texas with an estimated expenditure amount of $86,000. 4K, consider a resolution awarding a bid and approving a contract for the purchase of security system cabling IP cameras and related equipment from VTI Security through the State of Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 93104 with current amendment number four and amount not to exceed $125,501.36. 4M, consider a resolution approving a grant of hotel occupancy tax in the amount of $50,000 to the Great American Shootout Gasso to directly enhance and promote tourism in the hotel industry. 4O, consider an ordinance amending the master fee schedule for the fiscal year 2021-2022 as shown in Exhibit A.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair will entertain a motion, motion to approve by Councilmember, by Mayor Protem Harvey, seconded by Councilmember McNamara. Council, please vote. Thank you. Consent items unanimously approved. Moving to item five, Items for Individual Consideration. Before we open up these public hearings, I want to give a little direction and understanding of how these public hearings are conducted. When the, the staff member is first going to brief you and the city council on the item, at the conclusion of the briefing by that staff member, there will be no discussion by council at that time. That's when the public hearings are going to be opened. Now, at that time, we will open 10 minutes for all those in favor, and then followed by 10 minutes for all those in opposition. Those 10 minutes are not aggregated together, it's a total. So let's say, for example, when we get to a particular SUP and it's open for individuals in favor, if there are 20 people that wish to be in favor, we still only have 10 minutes allocated for those 20 people to speak. So my encouragement is if there are individuals who know that there are other individuals here that are in agreement with what they want to say, either in favor or in opposition, you may want to get to a spokesperson, or if you do want to speak, consider that 10-minute time limit, and maybe it's just best to come up and say, "I support whatever has already been said," or "I oppose whatever, you know, whatever's been said." So that 10-minute time limit is going to be imposed, so we just ask that you consider how you want to operate as individual citizens as the public hearings are opened. Are there, if there's no questions, well, I hope I've explained that well enough, and this is our standard procedure. This is nothing new or unusual for what we are doing for the public hearings tonight. First on the agenda, Item 5A, Conduct a Public Hearing, perenns 2021-25, to consider adoption of an ordinance to grant a specific use permit, quotes, SUP, to allow for drive-through on the SFW Fair North Edition Block A, Lot 1, approximately 1.87 acres, more commonly known as 511 East Camp Wisdom Road, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing for special conditions and approving an effective date. City Planner, Thibodeau. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As noted, this is an SUP request for a drive-through on approximately 1.869 acres at the commonly-known address, 511 East Camp Wisdom Road. Here's an aerial of the property. You can see it's bounded by I-20 to the north, to the east, west, and south, as various commercial uses, restaurant, retail, currently in existence, as you can see. The actual drive-through location within the area of request, you can see that it's oriented on the east or right side of the image within the box. You can see the, the drive-through kind of cutting through the, the trees there. Here's a shot of the current zoning map for the property, Zone Local Office Retail. The hatching that you see to the northeast of the subject property is the actual SUP for a commercial antenna that is currently in existence. Other than that, it's surrounded by LOR zoning, as you can see.
For those present, you might want to expand LOR.
Yeah, Local Office Retail, yes, sir. Thank you. So the project's go, request to allow for drive-through to be used in conjunction with the snow cone shop. The site has an existing area, as noted in the aerial, that was previously used in conjunction with an ice vending kiosk. Prior to that, I understand it was a Burger Street, which unfortunately, there's only a few of those left around the area. The use of drive-through has been abandoned and requires approval of the request, so nothing's been there utilizing the, the drive-through for six months or more. Therefore, the use, even though the drive-through exists, the use has actually been abandoned technically. So site parking and stack requirements are in conformance with relative standards. In regard to the comp plan, the future land use plan designates the property with Opportunity Area 6, which is recognized as a significant northern gateway into downtown. The plan envisions upscale retail, commercial, entertainment uses, and the plan also notes that there are several underutilized parcels, this being one of them, and this request involves one of those parcels. Here's a shot of the site. You can see the, the drive-through location on the right side. And here's sort of a zoom in showing the snow cone shop being programmed into the, into the drive-through area. And here's an image of the elevations of the snow cone shop. Staff sent out 11 notices for this request, and as of today, we have received no responses for or against this item. And at the October 25, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval of the request unanimously with no additional conditions to the SUP. And that is staff's presentation, and the applicant is also here, should you have any questions.
We may hear from the applicant after the public hearing. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at this time, and once again, we will open the public hearing at a particular point, 10 minutes for, 10 minutes opposed. We're going to open the public hearing. The timestamp is 8:10. All those in favor of this special use permit application, please come forward. Seeing none, the portion of this public hearing for those in favor is closed. All those opposed, please come forward. Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. Chair will take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by Councilmember Cooks, seconded by Mayor Protem Harvey. Councilmembers, please vote on closing the public hearing. Thank you. Public hearing is closed by unanimous vote. We are now going to take any discussion or comments from the city council members to Mr. Thibodeau. Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Councilmember Cooks. Council, please vote. This motion is approved by a vote of six to one dissenting Councilmember Cooks. Did you get the timestamp on the closure of the public hearing? I, I, thank, thank you. I forgot to note that. Moving on to Item 5B, Conduct a Public Hearing, perenns 2021-26, and Consider an Ordinance to Grant a Specific Use Permit, quotes, SUP, approximately 0.99 acre, more commonly known as 608 East Highway 67, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, has described in Exhibit A, providing for special conditions and providing for an effective date. Once again, Mr. Thibodeau, City Planner.
Thank you, sir. To recap, this is a SUP request for the use of Commercial General at 608 East, actually, this is Highway 67. So the aerial of this request is showing you Highway 67 slightly to the north, northwest of the property. Across Highway 67 to the west are commercial uses, Zone Commercial. You'll see that on the next slide, the zoning. To the north of the property is existing storage of large vehicles, as you can see. Vacant property immediately to the south, and further to the south is an existing used automobile dealer. Here's an image of the zoning of the property. You can see it's Zone GOR, which is General Office Retail. And then a commercial to the west across 67, as you can see. Again, this is to allow for the use of Commercial General. And to give you a little history on why we're here today, so we have a CO process that we follow. The first part of the CO process is the review portion. So the planning department provides a review. What we're looking at is the use and performance of the site as it relates to the relative standards and the zoning ordinance, and then fire provides a review, so does the building department and neighborhood services as well. So once they get through the review process, then they go into whatever site improvements they need to make. Sometimes you don't need to make any site improvements, so you'll inspect whatever works done. Hopefully that's done to satisfaction of the building official and to code, and you get your CO. So in this case, back in August of 2020 during the review period, unfortunately, the, the planning technician at the time for the city misclassified the use of Office Sales Showroom, which unfortunately was not a use in existence at the zoning ordinance of that time. That was the previous zoning ordinance. The way this was found out was through a request from an adjacent property to do some research into what was approved on the subject property, and it was discovered that the use was misclassified. It didn't exist. It didn't really touch on anything. So the staff brought in the, the applicant and let them know the situation, and how do we carve a path to, you know, the opportunity to make a request moving forward? And so that is for the use of Commercial General, which is, there's an opportunity for SUP approval within that district. The other use that was under consideration was a contractor's storage yard. However, that's only permitted in industrial districts. Outside storage is not permitted in commercial districts, so the applicant does have to do kind of a, you know, I call it a dance. They keep everything inside the structure so they don't fall into the category of contractor's storage yard, and they fit within the general commercial classification. And so a TCO, it says a CO here, but actually a temporary CO was issued by the building official in May of 2021. There were several site improvements that had to be done. That's why there's a kind of a gap in time here from August to May, from when the review was conducted to when the TCO was issued. In regard to the comp plan, the comp plan designates the property with an Opportunity Area 2, which is a key gateway into the city. Its envision is high-quality interstate and highway commercial development along 67, and the request involves reuse of existing structure and site improvements on the subject property. Staff sent out seven notices for this public hearing as of today. No formal responses have been received, but a petition has been received with a response from an adjacent property owner that has been provided, was also provided the commission at the October 25 PNC meeting. And at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of four to two with the following condition, that the SUP shall be renewed after five years following the adoption of the SUP ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. We will now go to the, the public hearing portion on this item, and once again, I will note that I, the cards that I have here, only one, well, two that I have, I can understand their position in knowing when they might come forward. The other individuals, I'm not sure where they might be coming forward in terms of in favor or opposition. So with that, we will open the public hearing on this Item 5B, timestamp 8:16. All those in favor of this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Pilstrom at 608 East Highway 67. I'm the owner, 50% owner of Prestige Pavers, the business that is requesting the SUP. We are a contractor. We sell product. We do hardscape. We are a contractor. We sell product. We do hardscape, such as wherever concrete goes, we can do your interlocking pavers, your travertine, your retaining walls, your flagstone. We have a showroom that we'd like to finish setting up within the building because we cannot have one outside because that is considered outdoor storage. We also, when a homeowner wants it installed, we do offer installation. Do you have any questions for me that, for more clarification?
You may want to just elaborate a bit why you're, this particular, it says that you were in favor of the SUP. You are the applicant.
I am the applicant, so I wasn't sure when. Just go up and speak. This is all new to me.
Well, and that's why we're here, to talk it through and to help you through this. Don't be nervous.
I'm not.
Okay, I understand.
I want this whole ordeal to be over with. I would love to get my CO and just conduct my business. Everybody in the area, conduct their own business and mind their own business, and let me do my business. And as long as I'm under the rules and follow the city ordinances, let me do my business.
Okay.
It's just been a very stressful year.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
No, I don't think so unless you have any questions.
City Attorney, during the public hearing time, is it permissible for city council to question the applicant or wait till later?
You agree. Do you have discretion in the council to question?
One quick question, and this will then obviate the 10-minute cut, is my question.
Yes.
You did mention what your business is. If you could elaborate just a little more detail on exactly what your business is, you will operate out of this building.
It's interlocking pavers, sidewalks, driveways, pool decks, retaining walls. We sell products directly from the manufacturers, such as pavers, retaining wall flagstone, travertine. We also offer to homeowners the opportunity for us to install it, because no homeowner's going to install it.
So potential customers would come into your building, you would have displays of these materials, and then if so, arrange for installation?
Correct. And a lot of times, we take the samples or the product to the homeowner because they want to match the product to their existing home, complement it, contrast it, whatever they may, and they want to see it outside because you can't really show this product inside. It's an outside product you need to see in sunlight.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Contreras.
Prior to the discovery of this zoning, does that include one?
Yep.
What was the difference between what you had planned to do with that property then versus what you have to do now?
None. None. The only thing that was changed was, we went in and we did a bunch of electrical work. We installed exit signs above exit doors per city, per fire marshal. We've installed fire extinguishers. We've installed, I believe it's almost 17 feet wide by, I don't remember how long, a fire lane. We've installed chain link fencing. We've repainted the building. We've cleaned the property up.
But I needed that.
Oh, we did it. We did it. But we do have neighbors that are very upset with us.
Okay. My follow-up to that is, I was familiar with a pretty successful pavestone business that was off of 67, and that yard was used as a staging ground for their actual, okay.
Yeah. You mean the one over off of Chris Lane?
Yes.
They were zoned completely different?
No, I understand that.
Yeah. We, because we were under general commercial or even general retail, we cannot have outdoor storage, period. So ours product is inside.
Okay. How about the storage of your vehicles, your trucks?
My trucks are outside on concrete parking.
Okay. And I guess I want to redirect the question to...
I didn't know if that would be considered outdoor storage. It's always been relative to the material.
If that particular question, in terms of the legitimacy of the outdoor parking, that would be addressed to the city planner, Mr. Thibodeau, not to the applicant.
Right. So that's a follow-up question to her answer there. Would it be allowed to store any type of vehicles, trucks, tractors, anything like that there?
Everybody meets up about 6:00 in the morning. Everybody meets, yeah. Everybody meets up about 6:00 in the morning. Their personal vehicles are parked outside in parking spots, and then they go in the company trucks, and then the company trucks are parked overnight and on the weekends. But tractors are stored at my house unless I need to have something, like a pallet or something unloaded at the office to put inside, then I may have a tractor there on an overnight deal, and it's in the back behind where you cannot see it from the street. The only way you can see it is from the south property or the north property, and that's if you walk into the back of the property.
Yeah, visibility wouldn't be an issue to me. It's just the use of the property for anything other than what fits in the zoning requirements. That includes if there's any prohibitions about parking equipment, whether it's 24 hours or for a week, or dropping off loads and pallets of materials.
Oh, no. We don't drop off. All the material that we order from them, I don't mean to interrupt you, all the material that we order from our suppliers is drop shipped directly to the customers.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in favor? Restart the 10-minute clock, please, for 10 minutes left.
Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Pillstrom. I'm at 608 East Highway 67. You had mentioned Concrete Paver Systems. I actually ran that company for 15 years. So I've been really in Duncanville for a long time. So as far as storing equipment, I store it at my house. I don't store it on the property, just for that reason, because we know that there is no outdoor storage. So all my equipment is stored at my house, my personal house. So, and all the other stuff, we've made room inside the building, set up the inside of the building where people can come inside. We sell hand tools. We sell all sorts of small item tools. When you come inside the facility, they're all set up on racks and everything like that. So we're trying to, everything is contained inside. The only thing that is outside, there's three vehicles that are stayed outside. They're gone during the day. They're there at 5, 6 o'clock at night, overnight, then they're gone during the day again.
And then they're there on the weekends.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that response. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. For those who wish to speak in favor, now open this portion of the public hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition. Please come forward. And this portion of the public hearing is limited to 10 minutes in the aggregate. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Burt. It's 602 Highway 67. If I might get the city secretary to pass those around. We have one for each of the council members, as well as these fellows. As I stated, my name is Gary Burt. I'm the neighbor next door to this company here. And as they just stated, he did a pretty good sidestep when she stated they had some materials outside. There's a bobcat that's out there right now, a backhoe.
Mr. Burt, you are not permitted to make any comments about the other individuals. Just please state your position on this particular SUP.
I'm opposed to it, and I'm telling you why I'm opposed to it.
You may continue, but do not make comments concerning the applicant.
There is a bobcat.
Do you understand? Please do not make comments concerning the applicant, only the item on the agenda. Thank you.
The, this afternoon, there's a bobcat that's parked behind that building. They come in every day in trucks and trailers. They drive through the field next door, leaving large ruts in it. You'll see from those photographs, the mud pit that they drug up and down the service road, the, as stated, they were across the street for a number of years. They knew that they should have had a certificate of occupancy. That wasn't a mistake that they just overlooked. They went in there in February of 2020. She had locked herself out of her car and came to my dealership to use the phone. At that time, I asked, what kind of business are y'all going into? When she told me, I told her that I would be her greatest opposition. That was because at that time, I had information about a shopping mall that was to be built in the 33 acres behind my dealership, from Papa Do's to the City Credit Union, from Cockrell Hill into the 67 service road. The petitions that you have in front of you are all the property owners on Highway 67, and there are a few here tonight off of Cockrell Hill. All of these properties, as you know, around a mall would become retail restaurant. All those metal buildings would be torn down. You would have pad sites for restaurants, not only on that side. I think it would go ahead to the other side of the freeway as well, and certainly on Cockrell Hill because it's already zone general retail. Now, I think these people just didn't do their due diligence, and they didn't care because they thought it's as easy to ask forgiveness as permission. But they knew as early as February of 2020 that they were not conforming to that CO. The code enforcement officer, Kevin Patton, as well as Esther Wright, and the fire marshal all told me personally that they should not have ever been there, that that's not a retail business, and it is nonconforming. The code enforcement team was told it's over your pay grade, and Mr. Randall Goucher ran this thing through. He, but anyway, like I said, they operated five or six months there, and it's still listed on this agenda as Torres Taxidermy. Torres Taxidermy's been gone for a year and a half. The man that bought this property, Angelo Thompson, is putting in a masonry contractor, a cement contractor, that has nothing to do with taxidermy. And the, I have a list of the last five jobs that they've done, and I have a recorded conversation with Mr. Paul Pillstrom back in around July of last year, where I posed as a customer, and I called and inquired about getting some flagstone or pavestone, and he answered me, and I quote, "We don't have any materials at all. We're just installers." And that appears to be the case. If you call Lone Star Contractors, you'll find that's who they subcontract from. They do not have a display inside. They do not have a retail. They close those gates when they leave at 6 o'clock in the morning. They lock those gates, and they're locked until she comes in around 9:00 or 10:00 for an hour or two. And they're locked again, and then the crew comes in about 4:30 in the afternoon with all the big trucks and trailers and cement mixers and the wheelbarrows, and they unload all that stuff and put the trucks out there. And the trucks are not little trucks. We're talking about two- and three-ton trucks. But this is a pure, you see those pictures, there's photographs of all the workers as they leave at 6 o'clock in the morning and in the evenings. This business in no way conforms to general retail, and it's injurious to every one of the property owners that have a chance to improve the value of their property, to increase the city's tax base 10-fold. And we're going to throw all of this aside so that one person that wished to violate the code and ordinance could have their way. To me, it's ludicrous. But with a shopping mall plus the restaurants on both, and not to mention the people of Hollywood Park and other citizens of Duncanville, they're having to go to Cedar Hill to shop. They could be doing that right here in Duncanville. The, like I stated earlier, I presented the same petition and evidence to P&amp;Z board, and it astounded me that the head of the P&amp;Z board said, "We're not allowed to look at financial inconveniences." What's a P&amp;Z board for if they're not planning and development for the better of the city and the community? But that's all I got to say, is I'm very much opposed to it, and I don't think the city should injure 30, maybe 35 businesses to help out one that violated all the rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Any other individuals wish to speak in favor? I'm sorry, in opposition, in opposition. Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is hereby closed. Chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved to close the public hearing by Mr. Harvey and seconded by Mr. Cooks. Council, please vote on closing the public hearing. Public hearing is unanimously closed. Timestamp 8:30. Mr. Thibodeau. Oh, I just want to, for the record, I do have citizen comments, and I presume that these individuals are in agreement with Mr. Burt in opposition. The first one is La Mesa Logan. Is that affirmation correct? You wish you're in opposition. I'm just going to make a note. I'm going to do my, Randy Wagner. Is it Randy Wagner?
Yes, sir.
Is that the correct name?
Wayne.
Randy Wayne. Do you mind if I make a W-A-Y-N-E? And you also in opposition. We will file that appropriately. Okay, city council members. Mr. Thibodeau, are there any questions that any council members wish to present, ask Mr. Thibodeau?
Go ahead, Greg.
Mr., okay.
Loaded.
Where are we?
Okay, just a quick question. Since the discovery of this mistake that happened, and since the P&amp;Z meeting, has staff been monitoring the property to see what's been going on on any regular basis?
As far I understand, yes, sir.
Okay. And have they reported back that they've seen something that would exceed what the allowances are for that zoning?
No, staff is aware of what they have to do to conform to what we're requesting today. You know, I know they run by the property consistently, haven't had any, anything, any violations filed or anything like that.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I'm trusting these pictures that were taken at that property, and I did notice that there was, it did look like a lot of traffic going in and out, and quite muddy and rutted up, and that would indicate to me that a lot of vehicles have been going back and forth through there.
Sure. Property standards is definitely something that will have to be consistently looked at on.
I can barely, Mr. Thibodeau, I can just barely hear your comment.
Apologies.
Can you restate it, please?
Yeah, the property maintenance is definitely something we would have to keep track on, just like any other property. You know, this one is flagged. You know, we're aware of it internally, so eyes are on the property, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, Mr. Thibodeau, would you restate the reason the SUP is brought to us today?
Yes. So the classification back in August 2020 of Office Sales Showroom did not exist as any kind of use in any kind of zoning category in the previous zoning ordinance. After May, staff discovered through the request from the adjacent property owner, the gentleman who came up to speak against, and discovered that that was the case, an error was made. And that was discovered definitively through my research. So then, opened up the new zoning ordinance, what are our options here? And so that's where we're at right now. General commercial is a vague kind of catch-all definition that's available in the GOR district via SUP, and so long as they don't violate the outside storage, it is a dance that they have to, they have to do. Then, you know, it was determined that they can request the use of general commercial versus contractor storage yard.
All right. Thank you. You know, I still stand where I normally stand when it comes to Highway 67, and making sure it is a very, as you mentioned, a gateway to our, to our city. And so therefore, any SUPs based upon that for me is, I just can't support, can't support simply because we're trying to build the appearance of our city off a very busy highway to look very attractive to our citizens and others going by as well. So I would not be supporting this SUP.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Any other comments by the city council? One comment that I would make in thinking about what Mr. Cooks had just said, yes, it is a gateway to our city. Looking at the lineup of businesses that are along that gateway, I don't see anything much wrong with a retail building sitting next to a used car lot in terms of enhancing that gateway. So seeing no other further comments, the chair will entertain a motion to approve this SUP.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabb, seconded by Mr. Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. The SUP is disapproved by a vote of five, hold on, hold on, vote of five to two with Gordon Moving on to item 5C, conduct a public hearing 2021-27 to consider adoption of an ordinance to grant a specific use permit SUP to allow for print shop on approximately 0.14 acre of real property located at 1310 South Main Street, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, and more particularly, described in Exhibit A, providing for special conditions and providing an effective date. Mr. Thibodeau? Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you, counsel. This is an SUP request to allow for the use of print shop at thirteen ten South Main Street. Here's an area, whoop, sorry.
Just a moment, please. Would, city manager, would you please ask, uh, law enforcement to try and keep order out there, please? City manager, is laws, is law enforcement in control of the situation out there?
Yes, they're working, yes, sir, they're working on the situation.
Is it possible, city attorney, that we can, uh, close the door and still keep an open meeting?
As long as there is a sign out that allows the meeting.
City manager, would you please ensure that there is some sign showing that we are still in session in an open meeting even though the door is closed, uh, for permitting noise not to enter here? I'm sorry, Mr. Thibodeau, for the interruption. We're clear to go, Ms. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thibodeau, yes, please proceed.
Sure. To revisit, this is an SUP request for the use of print shop at thirteen ten South Main Street. Here's an aerial of the property. Uh, to the north of the property is vacant, uh, zone, local office retail. To the south of the property is a, an inline lease-based shopping center, multi-tenant type, uh, development, uh, within the same zoning classification. To the west across Main Street is a multifamily development, uh, with a PD associated with it. Here's the look at the zoning. This is a request to allow for the use of print shop as mentioned. The subject property was formerly used as a sign manufacturing business and the site is intended to be reused as is with no proposed structural or site improvements. Uh, the existing parking is in conformance with the requirement associated with the use of print shop. Uh, to further explain, this kind of came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as far as the activity inside the building, you know, print shops, uh, vary in intensity. So, uh, from what I understand, the applicant is here to, uh, elaborate a little bit more, but the equipment is commercial grade, but it's not industrial grade in size. So it's, uh, it was presented as the, uh, from the applicant as sort of like a FedEx Kinko's, but without the shipping component to the business, if you wanna kind of relate that to something that you might recognize. So in regard to the comp plan, the future land use plan map designated property within the Main Street District, which recognizes the district as being a mixed-use activity hub, but more auto-oriented, uh, the plan envisions high-quality commercial to capitalize on the fieldhouse and on that, print shops provide goods and services such as customizing athletic apparel and other personalized items. You can see, uh, the fieldhouse and, and patrons to that utilizing a business like this for, uh, their teams or something like that. Here's a shot of the site as it exists. Here's the, uh, interior layout. And here are the existing site images, again, the building to be reused as is and then refacing the, uh, the sign. Should this be approved? Twenty-two notices were sent out for the public hearing and as of today, one response has been received in favor of this request. And at the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval unanimously with no additional conditions to the SUP. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, after public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Thibodeau, okay, we will now open this portion of the public hearing for this SUP before us, uh, for one three one zero South Main Street. Opening the public hearing timestamp is eight forty-one. All those in favor of this SUP, please come forward.
I'm the applicant, should I come forward or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, Jeff Christman, uh, my address is North Carolina currently, but this address is thirteen ten South Main Street. So, uh, I'm in favor of it. Anybody else? Uh, we're, we're very similar to, uh, you might say, a FedEx office. This would be a digital printing location, not a offset or lithography and actually, uh, we wouldn't be doing screen printing there. We sell online under several different brand names, uh, printdirtcheap.com, twodaybanners.com, but we have several facilities across the United States, so this one would be digital to serve, uh, what we call our impossible printing clients and that is you order today, get it tomorrow kind of thing. And, uh, we have a lot of clients in Texas and we love Duncanville, so we hope this goes through.
Very good, thank you. Any other individuals wishing, any other individuals wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. We'll open the, this portion of the public hearing for individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this SUP. Seeing none, we're closing this portion of the public hearing for those individuals wishing to speak in opposition. Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move. Second.
Uh, in the motion to close the public hearing by Mayor Pro Tim Harvey and seconded by Councilmember McNabb, please vote on closing the public hearing. Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing is approved at eight forty-three. At this time, we'll open up, uh, any discussion by city council members of Mr. Thibodeau. Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to approve this SUP.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, seconded by Councilmember Cooks. Counsel, please vote. This motion is unanimously approved. Thank you. Welcome to Duncanville. Item five D, as I mentioned, has been tabled. Moving on to item five E as in EZ. Consider appointments to the various boards and commissions, including Board of Adjustment, Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation Board, Perens DCEDC, Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, Library Advisory Board, Sign Control Board, and the TIF Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone Number One. City Secretary, please read the slate.
Next slide, please. At the city council meeting held, um, a special meeting to interview each applicant and current board members whose terms ended in August. After appointments were made, there were still openings available. Council requested that I re-advertise for these boards. Um, I will now read the names of the people who are appointed. Sign Control Board, we have Karen Sherry for November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-two, Steve Corley, November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-three, Nichelle Barbin, November twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, DCDC, Kadim Collins, November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-two. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Levon Washington, November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-three, Greg Zilka, November twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. Library Advisory Board, Erica Brownie, November twenty twenty-one through, uh, August twenty twenty-three, Catherine Reeves, November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-three, Katie B. We have Liz Smith, Jim Gilbert, and Gail Slager, all three for November twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the slate of appointments to boards and commissions for the city of Duncanville.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve by Councilmember McNabb, seconded by Councilmember Contreras. Councilmembers, please vote. The slate of individuals appointed to boards and commissions for the city of Duncanville is unanimously approved. Thank you, counsel. And thank you to those individuals who are volunteering to serve on our boards and commissions with their new appointments. Item five F, consider an ordinance creating classified positions under civil service in the police and fire departments providing for a pay scale under civil service. Mr. Todd Segal, HR Director, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council members and city manager. This item is an ordinance to amend the classified positions under civil service in the departments of police and fire. This next slide shows, uh, what the proposed classification changes or amendments would be. Uh, section two, there is no change for the fire department, but in section one, there are changes proposed for P one, which is the assistant chief level, to go from one assistant chief of police to two positions. And also in P four, based on the approved budget for this fiscal year, you approve two police officer positions to be added to the budget, so we've increased that number and this slide was not updated, uh, but that should be fifty, uh, it went from forty-eight to fifty. So the total number of positions in the Department of Police will be sixty-three. And like I said, there are no changes to the fire department. And with those two new police positions being added, they will not be filled in probably until mid-fiscal year, so there is enough vacancy allowance to fund the addition of the new assistant police chief position. So it's a budget-neutral, um, situation. These next two slides, this show what the current salaries will, are based on the approved budget for, this slide shows for all of the police positions and these are the current salaries. And then the next slide shows the current fire salaries based on the budget. Any questions before I turn it over to Assistant, I'm sorry, interim Police Chief Levickney?
Uh, I have one question, sir.
Yes, sir.
The, going back to, uh, that one right there.
Yes.
Knowing that P four should read fifty, uh, which the city council has now allocated the full staffing for our police department at sixty-three versus past sixty-one.
That is correct.
So the addition of the two, the two additional positions in P four are not affecting the appointment of a second assistant police chief. The assistant police chief second position is going to be taken from the P two police lieutenant stack, is that correct?
So, not really, because...
Then where does it, where does it come from?
The saving, with the money to fund the new, uh, assistant police chief will be because we are not filling the two police or the patrol positions until mid-fiscal year, so that savings will fund the new assistant chief.
No, I'm, I'm not talking money.
Okay.
I'm talking a, an organizational chart, I guess, if you will, in terms of the staffing chart.
So in terms of staffing...
So where, where does the new assistant police chief position come from in P one, two, three, or four?
So according to the Texas Local Government Code, chapter one forty-three, is, it has to be an internal police, a classified service member with two years within the department...
Still not answering my question, I'm not, I'm not...
So it's, it's actually a ripple effect. People are gonna move up within the ranks. So it could be a lieutenant, a sergeant, or a patrol officer who becomes a new assistant chief.
There you go, there you, okay, okay. So out of, out of allocated positions in P one, two, and three, or four, now, I said, let me restate, it's not gonna be P one. It's gonna, we are going to get a, a second assistant police chief out of P two, P three, or P four, depending on the individual's qualifications.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Texas Local Government Code, uh, for the position below department head, which is police chief, uh, calls for this to be opened up potentially to anybody with five years of law enforcement experience, two years continuously with the department, and at least an intermediate peace officer's license out of the state of Texas.
So they don't have to be a lieutenant to go to assistant police chief?
That's true.
Interesting.
Now, typically, that's the next step.
That's where my brain was going. I'm, I'm seeing the, the new assistant police chief come out of the P two, five positions in order to create the second, but it's not, that's not the case.
Not necessarily.
Okay, I got it now, thank you.
Now, understand these numbers, I'm gonna go to a different slide, maybe to be clear. These numbers, that forty-eight should be fifty as...
I got that, correct.
So just to give you some, a comparison of our sister best southwest cities, um, you'll see, um, our authorized sworn as, uh, you've approved, this doesn't, um, count the, uh, and our sixty, um, didn't get updated and that's, that's my fault. Um, I got back to this, I made some, uh, configurations, but that would get us to sixty-three. Sixty-two with the additional two officers, sixty-three if we approve that additional assistant chief position. It's still one point six-six percent of our total sworn, whereas if you'll see with Cedar Hill, it is, they have four point one-six of anything captain to assistant chief. Same thing with DeSoto, three point seven-five of their total sworn is at that level. So one point six-six percent of our total staffing is in that assistant chief position and for everything in this department to run through that office is very difficult to keep up with. And this, the chief of police should be looking more strategically down the line and to be dealing with where we're going to be tomorrow rather than where we are today solely and trying to help with that. And that's what the impetus for bringing this to you at this point. Mr. Harvey?
Uh, it's normally my position to call on councilmembers.
I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Harvey.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, sorry about that little snafu there. Um, so, and, and Madam City Manager, you may wanna chime in as well. So the total number of authorized positions that we approved is sixty-three and then after we do, if we approve this, it will still be sixty-three. It will be just that two of those sixty-three will be assistant police chiefs as opposed to previously it was one. So the overall number is not gonna change. Folk are gonna, somebody's gonna move around from somewhere below there.
To this point, you've approved a total of sixty-two. Now that does not account for the chief of police position. That's not counted in here. Sixty-two. This is an additional position. This is the second assistant chief position.
But it's not an additional position to the overall staffing plan.
Yes, it is.
If it's sixty-three, from what Mr. Harvey just said, I totally agree with what he just said, in terms of my understanding of what you're trying to explain to us.
So having the second assistant chief position before you tonight?
We still stay at, at sixty-three with two assistant police chiefs, correct?
If you take in that second one, it'll be sixty-three. Without the second one, we're at sixty-two.
We had sixty-one. We authorized two additional P fours, which made that number fifty instead of forty-eight, which took that slide from up to, from, from sixty-one to sixty-three. So I'm still understanding what Mr. Harvey said, that we have two assistant police chiefs, our total staffing is still sixty-three.
So with the addition, as of October first, of the two positions in P four, that should be fifty. And then you add the other thirteen and, um, you, yeah, you come to sixty-three, but that does take into account that second assistant chief position.
Exactly, yes, we agree with that.
So with what's here, when you add those two, yes, but, Todd, that second one is not in play yet, right?
Right, what you're seeing on this slide is the proposed, what we're hoping that you'll approve. Right now, we have sixty-two approved classified positions in police. Fifty patrol officers, six sergeants, five lieutenants, and one assistant chief. So that's sixty. With the addition, if you approve this additional, this ordinance, you would be approving the two additional police officers which you approved in the budget and the addition of the assistant chief for a total of sixty-three, so it is increasing by one position.
Okay.
Is that, then, is that clear for everyone?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any discussion we need to make public, you all just kind of figured this out?
No, no, we, 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 we're still working through it.
I, I went to Greg and it all...
Well, let, let's work, no, this is, let's work through this because, I mean, I thought I understood it, now I'm not understanding it.
So we just, I, I think Greg was first and I'll...
Well, no, I, my question doesn't everything do...
So, let me just make sure I understand.
Mr. Cooks?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You're really just, you're asking for an additional staff, which is now making it, moving it up to one. Forget the title, we're asking for an additional of what we already did before, is that what you're asking?
That is correct. We're asking for one more assistant chief, but we're also changing the patrol officer number to reflect what you had approved in the budget.
Right, right, but just, just talk about the budget for a second. The budget was how much, sixty-two, right?
Correct.
All you're asking for is one additional, forget the title for us just a second.
Correct.
You're asking for one additional outside of what we voted for on the budget.
Correct.
Which is now will be sixty-three.
That is correct.
So that's an additional.
So if you add, if the chart we're looking at, change that P four to five zero, it adds up to sixty-three.
Correct.
Because of the two in P one.
But currently, as we speak tonight...
There's only one.
We only have one assistant chief.
Got it. Okay.
So I have a, I have a follow-up question.
Mr. Harvey, please.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm doing great.
So, um...
No, I'm doing great.
So tell me again where the money comes from for the new position?
So the two new patrol officer positions approved in the budget will not be funded until mid fiscal year, and that savings will fund?
That's not the answer. I need to speak up.
City Manager, please clarify.
That is not the answer. We have vacancy savings because our current chief has been serving -- our current Assistant Chief has been serving as the interim Police Chief. And so that money will come from vacancy savings because we will still only have one chief. The issue when we talk about a budget versus his approved position is we have positions that are not fully budgeted for the fiscal year. And so that's why he said savings there. But the reality of it is, until we fill permanently the Police Chief, we will still only have one Assistant Chief. We will not be filling both chiefs right away. We are just asking for the classification because the job description changed.
Okay. Well, I understand that. But I think what's going to happen is the next time we assemble to do the budget, then we're going to have to come up with full-year funding for the new Assistant Chief. Is that -- okay. All right. I'm good.
That is exactly correct. Yeah. Mr. Cooks?
No, no.
We're good? Mr. Contreras?
Almost forgot my question. Is this -- this new proposed -- it is. This new proposed position, is that a tested position?
No, it's not. It's appointed.
Okay. Thank you.
As interim Chief Levigny said, he gave the qualifications to be able to be an Assistant Police Chief. Was it five years of service and blah, 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 blah? You don't have to reiterate. It's just -- so there's no testing involved. It's just qualification by time of service and selection by the chief.
There could be a selection process, but basically it's -- the assistants, both of them, if it were passed, would serve at the place of the Chief of Police.
But there's no civil service exam that has to be taken?
No, sir.
Okay, okay. Mr. Vera Cruz?
Chief, or Madam City Manager, so when we do select a Police Chief, then it'll go back to one Assistant Chief, one Police Chief, and then still 63.
That's something we can discuss at that time, but at this point in time, this would create the classified position. So if we change anything in here, we have to bring it back to council as a civil service position.
I think what, to put this into my own experience window, what we're creating is a staffing pattern. That's what we used to call it.
Yes.
We're creating a staffing pattern. This is the staffing pattern. It doesn't have to do with anything with budgetary concerns. It's simply this is how many people that is felt necessary to run the operation, so to speak.
Correct.
And until such time as funds are available to fund all these positions, the staffing pattern, staffing pattern is filled as we possibly can. Okay. Mr. Cooks?
Mayor, if we're finished, I'd like to make a motion if you're --
Please do, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the addition of the police, of one added staff to our Police Department.
And I'll second it.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Cooks, and let's have a second by Mr. Mac Burnett. Thank you very much. Please vote. Unanimously approved. And Chief Levigny and Mr. Siegel and City Manager, please accept our thanks for walking us through this and so that we have a clear mind of where we're going. We didn't mean to get so --
No, it's fine. Did you want to thank him or thank him for making it hard?
That too. That too.
Thank you, and I'll -- we'll take some of that.
Okay. All right, moving on to, we are on Item G. Consider an Ordinance Amending Chapter 12, parentheses, miscellaneous offenses and provisions, close parentheses, by adding Article 26, parentheses, mobile food vendors and food trucks. Mr. Thibodeau, you're up again, sir.
Thank you, Council. During the work session portion of the September 21st, 2021 City Council meeting, staff facilitated a discussion providing information on mobile food vendors and food trucks regarding the intended permitting process, the application and associated standards and regulations intended to be formally proposed to council, that being tonight. So the proposed ordinance consists of the following: requirements for all mobile food vendors, as I noted, performance standards, as I noted, but really the crux of it is the application requirements, the permitting fees, language for permit revocation and appeal and inspection requirements. And staff has recommended approval of the mobile food vendor and food truck ordinance.
Reading over the documentation that we were provided, within the bounds of that ordinance, it said that any food truck that is present for four hours or greater, that food truck owner-operator must provide a temporary -- a porta potty?
Yes.
Yes. So...
Or have a means within a certain distance for patrons to go to the restroom.
There it is, yes.
Yes, sir.
So there has to be one somewhere within a certain proximity, or they have to provide one.
That's right.
So when the -- and here, it's almost a rhetorical hypothetical question. When a food truck vendor would apply for this permit, is there somewhere in the permit that's going to ask, are you going to be here for more than four hours? Or is the individual looking at that and certifying that permit going to ask that question so that they know that the restroom applicability comes into effect?
That's right, yeah. On the permit, there will be an item where you check that off. Also, on the plans that we received to review, we'll make sure we know where that location is, if it's a porta potty, that it's in a safe location, or if they're going to use an adjacent neighbor's facilities or something like that, they meet the appropriate distance requirements.
Okay. I'm not sure who came up first. I just -- Mr. Harvey, I'm going to work -- oh, you're -- okay, then Mr. Cooks, please.
Mr. Thibodeau, would you help us out just really quick? And I think I've picked this up from having a bike event at the high school. Tell us to correct terminology for the word porta potty. I know that --
Restroom facilities.
No, there was another -- anyway, okay. All right, if you'll --
Temporary toilet.
No, City Manager, if you -- what's our Parks Director, Bark? If you ask Bark to provide that, he provided that for me at the parking lot of the city facility, but if you'll help us with that word porta potty, that'll be great. I do have a second question. And the question is, and this is more so City Attorney, if you'll help me with this one, because I'd like to talk about having a -- our certificate posted at the food trucks where they've been inspected by our health inspector.
That's a requirement by the ordinance, yes, sir.
I'd like to have it posted. Is it -- will it be posted up for citizens to see it?
It shall be visible from the patrons. Yes, it shall be posted and visible.
The score or the permit? He's talking about the score on the health inspection.
Oh, sorry, I'm talking about the permit, so.
Yeah, and the reason -- yes, that's correct. And the reason I'm asking that, because this, of course, I'm in favor of food trucks, but I want to make sure our citizens are healthy and they know what they're getting and they're able to look at that food truck and say, yes, I want to eat here, no, I do not want to eat here.
That's right.
And so I think that will help our citizens. I hope later on, we can adopt that for our whole city. But until then, I'd like to start it by making a recommendation to the council that we look at it for this food truck as we start out a new venture in food trucks.
And I hope you notice they are subject to an inspection at any point in time.
Yes, but so City Attorney, help me with the conversation with her, please.
There's two places. If you go to, start on page 2, it says 12-292, and that is the requirements for all food vendors. And then you go to C on the next page, 2, little i, little 5, and you're going to add the following. Because these are the things that have to be displayed on the food truck, is one, the permit, which Sky alluded to, or Mr. Thibodeau alluded to, two, the health certificate issued in accordance with Article 2, then the Texas Sales Tax Certificate, and you're going to add that the current health inspection for the commissary or the mobile vending unit score is authorized under subsection C7 of this section.
And if you accept what he's saying, that'll be the motion.
Yes. And then I've added to subsection 7 of that same section, the requirement that they have the score generated. Because right now, when you go in, everyone's scored under state health regulations on a 100 scale. If you get less than 70, you're probably going to get closed. So those raw score numbers, 92, 95, all of our restaurants here will be in that high 90s in all likelihood. Or if a mobile vendor had an 85, you may not want to eat at a place that's 85, you'd eat a place in 95. Now, one of the things that I've seen recently is, since we're all use mobile phones now, they have a QR code in lieu of posting the score, and you put your phone up to it, and it gives you the score and the report, so you can see what got knocked off of the 100. Because there's very few places that would be totally perfect, so. That's something you all may want to look at in the future for restaurants, to your point. But I got you covered for the food vending.
Thank you, City Attorney. That's exactly what I was --
Okay. So before you make the motion, I see that -- I saw Mr. -- I just wanted to make sure Ms. Contreras.
I can either do it in the morning or --
Okay, okay. So we're -- you're good.
No, I have my light on.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because you went like that.
I was trying to get your attention. You were asking for a motion.
No, I wasn't asking for a motion. I was going to ask for a -- I was asking for a delay in the motion so that you could speak.
I understand. Mr. Thibodeau, can you explain the parking surface requirements?
Yes, so typically, it's going to be asphalt or concrete, obviously, but we might run into a few occasions where, you know, crushed granite, another surface that can hold the load of that truck or mobile food vending unit. You know, we can -- there's the flexibility there. If there's a surface that's shown on a site plan that's not asphalt concrete, what I will do personally is go out probably with the building official or with an engineer and look at the surface, you know, kind of do a site testing and make sure it can actually support, you know, a food truck or a mobile food unit.
Okay, and so you can make that decision where another ordinance requires hard surface? You can make that decision?
Temporarily, yes, sir, for something like this. Yes, sir.
All right, that's my first question. Second one is, talk a little bit about F1, and I couldn't pull this back up on my iPad, so, under prohibitions. Well, there's a mention in there about alcohol. And I apologize, I don't know why I can't pull this back up.
Mine won't reload either.
There's a mention in there, something about complying with TABC rules and regulations.
Right, just default.
It's on page 6.
Thank you.
On page 6 of 11, Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you.
I'll read it.
Right, right.
You got it?
As it reads, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe a question for me. It says alcohol sales and mobile food vendors from the unit is prohibited unless otherwise licensed by the TABC.
Okay, so a simple follow-up question to that is, if one of these were to be located within whatever the distance is from a church, how do you identify that before you give the permit?
Yeah, I guess would that be a mixed beverage, same situation?
Well, if they're allowed to sell it and they're within the distance requirement of a church, then they're not going to get the permit from the state.
Okay, so that would be Mr. Thibodeau that would monitor that before they issued?
They're permitted, and I would recommend that we call TABC and say they're in dispense within 300 feet of the church, and we're not going to honor that distance requirement because you have weight, so it's a local requirement. Even if you have the license, you can sell within 300 feet of the church.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're monitoring that before we issue the permit, that we know that that particular location they're requesting to be in is not within that 300 feet.
Right, and that'd be part of that site plan.
Okay. And last question, and this goes back to the porta potties. How long can they remain there? So if somebody gets a permit and they want to be there, say, every Saturday and Sunday, the porta potty sits out in that parking lot?
No, we wouldn't permit that. That would be -- that would become outside storage.
Okay, so they'd have to order a porta potty if they did it, let's say, every Saturday and Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
They'd have to order one.
Higher vendor come, stall it, pick it up.
And then when they leave on Sunday, it's got to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
For information, extensive research was done through all the Wi-Fi and Bluetooth and everything. The proper term is port-alet.
Port-alet.
Port-alets. I like porta toilet better, but port-alet is the official.
Thank you, City Manager, for looking that up. I do, was there something?
No. I did have one more question, and it's not pulling up, and I don't remember exactly where it is, but there's an exception for ice cream.
Mm-hmm.
And my question is, does ice cream also pertain to snow cones? Because we have a vendor very, very frequently on our premises that does snow cones. So is that exception that's noted in this, in the body of this, only for ice cream, or does it also, is by inference also include snow cones?
Yes, inference. Yes, sir.
Is it, City Attorney, is it necessary that it's a spec -- I mean, I would not --
To me, they're different, because the popsicle guy is prepackaged food, it's frozen, it's just mobile heat dispensed.
So my thinking --
Snow cone is prepared on-site, that's health problem.
So I would think that we need some distinction between that exception to say if ice cream does, cannot be applied broadly to snow cones as well, then we need to make --
Or, how do you like this, frozen novelties that are --
Prepackaged.
Prepackaged.
Prepackaged, frozen novelties are exceptions.
If anyone is actually scooping ice cream out of a open container, that to me is different. Now you got the health code.
Got it.
I had the reverse thing in my mind, sorry.
So the snow cone guy is not an exception.
Right, right. I had the reverse situation in my mind.
Got it. Okay.
Got it.
Got it, okay. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So the second?
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Contreras.
And all those --
Oh, yeah, it's all --
The second would accept the amendments with regard to displaying the score, requiring the score to be posted, and prepackaged, frozen out.
Right. All that's inclusive. So the motion by Mr. Contreras, the second by Mr. Harvey, please vote.
It's going to be 40 years from a prepackaged, frozen out.
Inanimously approved. Thank you very much. Item H.
Scott, I'm going to change the order.
Item H. Consider resolution supporting and adopting the City of Duncanville Investment Policy Managing Director of Financial Services, Atmore.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. Here tonight to present to you the investment policy review. And basically, this, our investment policy is reviewed annually, and we use Valley View Consulting. They are our investment advisors, and they are here tonight. Mr. Tim Panan is here tonight, so I'm just basically introducing him, and he's going to go over basically their policies, our investment policies, and the changes that we made within that policies. There were also some questions that were asked, and what he and I will do, we'll do our best to answer those questions as best we can this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Panan with Valley View Consulting.
Thank you, Ms. Atmore.
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
I hope we've been entertaining tonight.
We have indeed. We have indeed. I don't know that I can live up to those standards, so the bar's been set high. So this is just a reference to the Public Funds Investment Act, and so as you can see, this is part of the policy, is that annually, the governing body is to review and approve the investment policy for the city. And the purpose is, each, you know, with legislative sessions, a lot of times, there are changes that are made, so that result in a change that needs to be made to the policy. Other changes are just terminology that evolve over time, the way things are phrased. So I'm going to show you a couple of examples of what we're recommending to be changed in the new or revised policy. So a lot of it is minor wording changes. Section 5 was investment responsibility and delegation of authority. And so in the original policy, I believe the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager were listed as investment officers. And a lot of cities are moving away from that, and they're delegating that to the that to the finance team. One of the reasons is, a lot of times, City Managers have a lot on their plate, and part of the responsibility of, or one of the requirements of being an investment officer is you have to do eight hours of training, which isn't a lot, but when you've got a lot on your plate already, it just kind of adds more, and so it really is a better fit with the finance director. So that's, that's one of the changes that's here. A lot of times, what we see is the City Manager, Assistant City Manager are on the investment committee, as well as a lot of times, it's the Mayor and a Councilmember perhaps are on that committee. So you've got two different roles on that committee, one is an investment officer, and so the investment officer is who we at Valley View will contact, like in this case, it'll be Ms. Atmore, will may say, hey, the city has two million dollars maturing in an investment, and we'll look at what the reinvestment options are, she'll be our point person to authorize that. The committee will come together, typically quarterly, review the quarterly, or the quarterly investment report, which we're going to look at on the agenda a little bit later, and so as a committee, they'll review that, so kind of an oversight committee to see that. So those are the two roles within the investment committee. So just looking at here, yeah, in deletion of, in section seven, diversification, we moved that, we kind of moved around the strategies to break that out into another section a little bit later in the policy. Here's some examples of some other changes, and again, you can just kind of see there are a lot of times just kind of terminology, going from city's bank depository to city's primary depository, another one is in Attachment A, we were looking at what's called an efficient market from a quarter of a percentage point to ten basis points, so a lot of times, it's, again, it's kind of some technicalities, but just fine tuning, keeping it in line with current best practices. And then, this is another example on page ten for safekeeping and collateralization, so again, you see changing from bank to financial institution, and then going from a third-party bank, changing it to a third-party custodian, so just, again, terminology adjustments. So really, that's the essence of the changes that are in this revision, and again, it's good to do this on an annual basis, really, there were overall pretty minor changes to the city's policy, so it's in, it's been kept up to date, it's in good shape, there were not a lot of changes, but this is part of that just annual tweaking that's good to do to keep it up to date and keep it fresh, so. Any questions for me?
Couple of questions for you, sir. I know that we've been educated on the maximum amount of interest, I guess, or the yields that we can receive by law, because of being a municipality and having to be safe with our yields and so forth.
Right.
In fact, I noticed in one portion of the document, it says that yield is subordinate to safety and liquidity.
Right.
Which means, don't earn a whole lot of money as long as things are safe.
Well, not necessarily.
Kind of like, but, so is, with the addition, as I'm reading this, it seems as though money market mutual funds have been added. Is that correct, or they were there and just modified? Because they were redlined, they were redlined in the document as money market mutual funds, and I'm seeing that as, now we can do that, whereas in the past, we couldn't.
Yeah, basically, we are in what we call money market mutual funds, when we invest in the government pool, that is basically a money market mutual fund.
That's what I thought, but reading the red line, I kind of got it that we weren't, and now we are, but we've always has been.
A lot of times, and those are terms that do kind of get blurred together, between money market accounts, money market mutual funds, and so there are specific types that are allowable under PFIA for a city to invest in.
Okay.
Typically, like, you know, Texpool, Texas Class, Logic are some of the ones, some of the large ones that cities commonly use to invest their overnight short-term funds.
Okay, second question. In paragraph five point one, investment officers, it now includes the Director of Economic Development, which, so, my understanding is that person was not in there before, so it's now added. My question is, does that person have signature authority for disbursements now being designated as an investment officer?
Well, we're going to have to go back and clarify that, because when Tim and I talked, we understand there's investment committee, and those are the members that sit down and talk about the report, and we get advice or insight into how we, what we're investing in, and we go over the report, and investment officers are really the people that actually have the authority to actually make the investments and sign off on the authority, so...
See, there's the, you just said sign off, and that's kind of like, is he going to have the actual authority without any oversight to sign off?
No, so we'll have to clarify, when I go back into the investment report, we're going to change that, adjust that in the policy, is that he's just going to be part of the investment committee.
Oh, okay.
And so at this point, with myself being authorized as the investment officer, and along with the senior accountant who's also had the training, okay, so those would be the investment officers. The Economic Development Director is added as part of the investment committee, so I can have a little bit of diversification of, you know, input and insight onto the investments that we are in, and we thought he had, he had the perfect background, since he does have an accounting background, and knows about money and investment into our community, we thought he'd be a perfect fit to be on the committee to help us make sure we're steering in the right direction.
So is it, you said, the policy is going to be amended to modify that, to include the word committee in that?
Yes.
Because, yeah, that was my concern, is that the Economic Development Director could make disbursements with singles, signature authority without any oversight.
No, right now, only the people that have authority on the bank account can make those to sign away, you know, money on the bank, but when you do an investment officer, I have the ability to say yea and nay to investments that we invest in.
Okay, my last question, then, on page eleven, paragraph six point one point three, there's an author's comment, and I presume this is, this is your comment.
Right.
Quote, "Previously, the city has not authorized local government municipal bonds." I'm reading that to mean that, I read that paragraph, I don't see that we are or aren't, so what is the purpose of that comment?
Well, I read it, when I read it, I take, because when you talk about instruments of a state, and we are, when you talk about local governments of a state, we are the instrumentalities of states, okay, which means that we're local governments under the state authority, so that's how I took it, but we can go back and put in specifically that we can invest in municipal bonds, which...
See, that, when I read that paragraph, it kind of stopped at federal and state, and I'm going like, there's a couple of levels below that 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 comment referred to, and I didn't see it there.
Yes, we would like to be able to invest in municipal bonds, because I have in other cities had that option, and there are some good ones out there, such as the city of Duncanville, but we wouldn't invest in ourselves, of course.
So that's going to be another modification?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. So who is currently on the investment committee?
Our Economic Development Director, myself, and the senior accountant.
Okay, so, two of the three people that are on the investment committee have the authority to handle investments?
Yes.
Okay, had any thought been given to, I know you, I'm sure you want to stay at an odd number, because an odd number is easier to manage, but maybe substituting for one of the people that's on there, maybe another outside person, I don't know, maybe even a council member, you know, so, yeah, because that, that will help with, that will help with oversight.
Yes.
And independent view of things, I'm just throwing that out. Second thing is, when we actually execute a transaction, is dual confirmation required or just one person?
When we actually execute and move the funds?
Yes.
Dual controls are in place at the bank. I may set up the wire, but it has to be approved by somebody else, I cannot set up a wire and approve it at both, at the same time.
That answers my question.
Okay.
But it'd be excellent idea to add a council member to the investment committee, I would welcome that opportunity to work with a member of council on the investment committee.
Okay, any further comments or discussion by council?
No, I, I echo that, that councillor, that Mayor Protem just said, I was going to say that as well, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Well, Councilmember Harvey made a good point, now if you have four...
They all just have to be there.
Do you need, do you need five to have an odd number? Ah, never mind.
[laughing]
Never, you'll work it out, you'll work, you'll work it out, okay. All right, Chair will entertain a motion to approve?
Mayor.
Oh, no, we need a motion, we need a motion, I'm sorry.
Let me ask, are we approving this first, or are we waiting until they come back with the information, revised information before we approve?
I think that's too many changes to make in a document that we don't have control over, so maybe the thing to do is have them make the changes they took due tonight, and then put it on the agenda next time.
Right.
So this one's coming back?
Yes, sir, we'll see if we can put it on the...
So officially tabling this, right, City Attorney?
Yes.
Table.
I'll make the motion table it.
Second?
We have a motion to table by Councilmember McNabb, seconded by Councilmember Harvey, please vote on the motion to table item H. Motion is approved to table, item H. Where are we?
Uh...
Oh, L, we're, now we're going to, 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 to...
Council calendar?
Can...
You got Greg's thing, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Can I make a request?
Yeah.
We have a, Mr. Panan is here to present the quarterly investment report, is it possible to, for him to go ahead and present that while he is here, or do you not?
Yeah, I, yeah, go ahead and do the quarterly investment report.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's like flipping through the TV channel, right? Thank you. So what we've done here is, you get, you have the quarterly investment report in your packets, but it's quite a bit of information, a lot of numbers on there, and so this is a format we've used that some of our clients have really enjoyed from the city council perspective, to give you a quick overview of how the portfolio is performing, and just to create an opportunity for any questions and discussion you guys may want to have. So, end of, obviously, September thirtieth was the end of the city's fiscal year, so that's a good time to do a year-to-year comparison. So you can see that the city's total portfolio increased from last year to this year by six million dollars, from sixty-two to sixty-eight million. You can also see that the city's interest earned dropped off quite a bit from a million to three hundred and fifteen thousand, and the next line kind of explains why that happened, because the city's portfolio yield went from one, one point five two percent to forty-six basis points, so a pretty substantial drop there, and you can also see that's reflected in the market itself. So, the rolling three-month treasury is a lot of times what we use as a benchmark measurement, because with, as a city, as a government, it's a pretty narrow lane of what you can invest in, you typically need to keep the terms or the funds in fairly short in type investments, so that's a good benchmark to measure against. So this, I think, is a really helpful chart, sometimes charts can be overwhelming, or it's like, what am I looking at? So, really, the key thing I would say to focus in on here is the blue line, because that's the city's portfolio return, and so the green and the red line, the red line is Texpool, which is the money market fund that a lot of cities, it's really set up specifically for Texas government entities, and then the green line is the rolling three-month treasury bill, and you can see, they really pretty much move in tandem, but the good news that you see from this report is Duncanville has consistently outperformed those benchmarks, so that's, that's a really positive thing that we want to see in that kind of a graph. So now, taking a look at just quarter to quarter, from last June to the end of September, city's funds went down five million, which is very typical this time of year, typically on a city, you're going to see that spike in January, February, when the property taxes are coming in, over the following ten months, you're spending those funds down, so this is a very normal pattern to see here. You can see that there was not a lot of change in the city's weighted portfolio yield, they went from thirty-four basis points to thirty-three, it's about the same, and interest earned decreased a little bit, primarily because the balance has decreased over that time. Again, this is just a look at how is the city doing compared to those benchmarks, it also gives you a good snapshot of where is the market, what are we seeing these days? So again, the three-month treasury bill at the end of June was at two basis points, it has moved up a little bit to five basis points at the end of September, six-month is really unchanged, and Texpool has moved up just a little bit, but not much, really minimal rates right now. So the yield curve is another indicator that we'll share a lot of times with, with our clients, because a lot of times, that can be somewhat forward-looking, where do we expect rates to go, are the rates going to stay this low, what's, what's coming, and also, how far out can we go to pick up some yield? So you can see the red line was last year, and that's a really flat yield curve, even if you go out ten years, if you were to invest that long, you were going to get less than one percent on your investment. And you can see on the short end, which is where the cities typically stay, that two years and less, the red line, even going out two years, you were under twenty basis points last year, so there was just nowhere to go to get a good yield on your, on your funds, even extending out a little bit. That picture is starting to change a little bit, so you can see, looking at this graph, blue is October, so that's just a couple of weeks ago, those yields are starting to increase, the yield curve is steepening, an indication that the market is anticipating that rates are going to begin increasing. The Federal Reserve had been saying they weren't anticipating any changes in the Fed Fund rate until 2023, now they're saying they're expecting possibly a change mid February, sorry, mid 2022. So the tone is starting to change on what is coming out of the Federal Reserve. So our strategy is really to continue to ladder the portfolio, so you do want to put some of your funds out in that one and two-year now, pick up some of those higher returns that are available, and, and then, but keep some of them short as the funds do increase, and then you can take advantage of those as, as the rates increase. So, that's kind of a quick snapshot of your, of the city's portfolio, are there any questions for me?
Well, I have a question, I don't know whether it's for you on this topic, or for Ms. Atmore on the, on the quarterly report, and it pertains to the movement of funds to obtain a greater interest rate in the portfolio, is, would that be now, or should I hold that question for the quarterly report?
Um, to get a better yield on the portfolio at this time, like you said, we're looking at rates going up in the future, but what we're doing now is that we are laddering, ladder, 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 with CDs, okay, because right now, in the market, there's the best thing for us to best, invest in, is CDs. If I try treasuries or agencies, I get the, basically the same yield, but I get more complexity, so it's just better to stay simple and, and do the CDs, and then I can, I can move with the maturities, and if I need to go further out, I can or not, but I'm working with Valley View in order to structure and strategize on our yields and how long out I go, and how, you know, how short-term I need, based on when we need the funds, based on what we have coming up, and based on our cash flow that we have in the cycle.
So, here's my question, and it's a very hypothetical kind of a thing, I did some research on money markets, because going back to what I just read, and I go, oh, cool, money markets, so, the top eight money markets right now are, are giving yields between fifty and sixty basis points, and looking at the information in our quarterly financial report, we've got some CDs at twenty, twenty, twenty-five, forty, thirty, thirty, you know, low, so, is it, is it legal, I guess, to move some of these monies where we're getting twenty basis points into a money market right now, or we can get fifty or sixty basis points, because that's a huge, okay, I know, little bitty bits of money, but in terms of looking at the basis points, we can go from twenty basis points to sixty basis points.
Right.
Can we do that legally?
Oh, you, we need to, we would need to know what mutual funds you are looking at, okay, because every mutual fund is not alike, they're not all the same, okay, and so, as Valley View, when they responded to your questions earlier, it was like, we need to know that the mutual funds you're actually looking at, so we could determine what they're actually investing in, because some of it may not be in compliance with our investment policy for city funds, and so we would need to know what those are, there may be a reason why they're that high a rate.
And I can speak to that a little bit more, I just, yeah, so I saw, I saw your email earlier about that, since, because I have funds at Capital One, and I have a savings account, there's like, what am I getting on that, I haven't, so I'm getting thirty basis points, but I don't have nearly as much money as the city of Duncanville, and so, the, one of the differences is, the banks, there's kind of the retail side of the bank, and then there's the wholesale side of the bank, so the retail side is looking for individuals, they're, because they're also looking to make car loans, open checking accounts, mortgages, so, so there's, that's kind of a foot in the door, a way to attract that business, and they do want those sum balances. And they do want those sum balances. The challenge with cities' funds is, one, there's a lot of, a lot more money. And, and banks are flush with cash right now. And so because of all of the stimulus money that's come in, that ends up in, in cities' banking accounts, individuals' banking accounts. And so banks don't have an appetite for lending, I'm sorry, don't have an appetite for more deposits because their deposits so far exceed what they can lend. And so what do they do with those excess deposits? Well, you know, we looked at what the interest rates are. They can get .03, .05, you know, going out in short-term funds. So, so we send out solicitations to 20 to 30 banks asking for CD rates. We'll typically get back two to three banks that respond, and the rates are, are very low. So part of, and part of the issue is city funds have to be collateralized. Anything that exceeds FDIC balances, those funds have to be collateralized. Well, that's a cost to the banks of typically around 15 basis points. So they've got to, so you and I can get a better, a better rate on a money market fund than, say, a city can.
So my research on the internet was basically looking at retail rates versus the wholesale rate.
Most likely, if you can find those, we are happy to look at that because we've got a long list of clients that love to get that return. Yeah, no, because we, we're always, and we do have, we do have some banks that are, have offered, and I think Duncanville has some there, but they're capping us. And they're saying, okay, yeah, we'll take, we'll take $10 million from Duncanville. But that's, they cut us off. It's like, that's it. And so that, yeah, we're kind of, we are searching for banks to take deposits. That's, that's the world we're in right now.
Okay, thank you.
But if you look at the investment report, you will see what Wells Fargo is giving us right now on our earnings credit rate, okay? So right now, it exceeds what I can get on a CD. It is .5, between .5 and .7, I believe.
Yeah, .6, I think, is your effective.
Yeah, my effective rate is .6, and the actual credit rating is .75, so...
Unfortunately, that just goes to offset bank fees, but still, that's, that's helpful. I mean, I think it takes, what, six or seven million? I can't remember it off the top of my head.
It's like 7 million, so that can offset all my fees of, for me to transfer money to each of the transactions, costs a bit of money to do if I have returns and that type of thing. So those fees are offset, whereas before, we used to have to send them money and pay a bill. Now I don't have to because the interest earnings covers all of those fees in the bank.
Okay, very good, thank you. Didn't mean to dive too deep on it.
No, good questions. That's exactly what, that's kind of what we want.
Mr. Harvey.
So is there not a section in the investment policy that lists the, the institutions or the business partners that the, that the city is allowed to invest in?
It, it, it lists the broker-dealers.
It lists the broker-dealers, yeah.
Yes, there is a list provided on the investment policies for broker-dealers. We look at that list every year.
So, so before, before we invest our money with a, some company that's offering that interest rate, we would have to, well, one, we'd have to put them on a broker-dealer rate, I mean, a broker-dealer list for us to approve. And then, secondly, they would have to look at the investment policy of the city and certify
Right, exactly.
that, that what they are doing is in compliance with the investment policy of the city.
Absolutely. And that is why we partner with Valley View, who's out in the market all times, doing this kind of work and making sure that the broker-dealers we have, that we do do business with, are eligible to do business with a governmental entity. So, yeah, that, that is exactly why we partner with them in order to make this job a lot easier, to make sure the funds are safe. And, and by the way, Mayor, we, we do look at the safety first because it's according to the Public Funds Investment Act. And so we are mandated to make that a priority versus the yield.
Because it's, it's four criteria. Safety is first and yield is fourth.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I learned reading this thing.
Now, now, so one of the things that's plaguing the economy right now is the supply chain, which I guess starts in China. And now China is having an economic slowdown of its own. At, at what point does the, does the Fed respond to inflation? Because the traditional response is tighten the money supply and interest rates go up. So the, the market is anticipating that this will happen because you just showed us this graph where the further you go out, the lines go up. So at, at what point do you think, given your expertise, that would, that would happen?
That is the million-dollar question because, you know, the, the economy is still fairly fragile. It's still in recovery. If you raise rates too much, you jeopardize the recovery. If you, if you don't raise rates, now you've, you've introduced so much stimulus into the economy that inflation is a concern. Supply chain's also creating inflation because you're, you're reducing your supply, but demand is remaining the same. So, no, they're, they're kind of caught between two. Your question is the million-dollar question that they probably wrestle with every day is, is finding that right balance between keeping the economy going, but not letting inflation get out of control. And, yeah, usually, they use the interest rates to try to tamper that down. But, but this is a, it's a, it's a unique, really unique environment we're in right now, so...
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cooks.
Yeah, just real quick, just for our citizens' sake. Tell me, I know there's probably many, but tell me the top three things that we, as a city, cannot invest in. The top three areas.
No collateral, mortgage-backed securities are out of the, out of the question.
Stocks.
Stocks, equity securities out of the question. Corporate bonds are out of the questions. That's the top three.
It's really more what you can invest in. That's probably the easier, less difficult.
So there's a lot of other stuff, derivatives, all those types of things. We can't, we can't do that. That's just putting at-risk taxpayer dollars, and that's not what cities should be doing. That's not best practice, and that's not what we do.
I thought it was going to be something else as well, but I'll, I'll wait to ask that one later then.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff we can't invest in. Hence, the mayor's yield question about, you know, can we get a better yield? Well, yes, we can get a better yield. But because we are governed by other standards and other practices in this industry, we can't do those types of things. So, yes, we are limited on what we can invest in.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you know, a great point was made about looking at the portfolio of a mutual fund to find out if every single security within that mutual fund is the right or is authorized by what we can and can't do.
Right, and that's, that was...
So it's huge, it's, yeah, very, very huge.
That was kind of the thought process behind Tech Pool is it's specifically designed to meet that Public Fund Investment Act criteria. And then there, there's other limitations. They have to keep a 60-day weighted average maturity. They can't invest for longer than 13 months. So they, there are constraints on that to keep it very conservative, so...
Okay, thank you. This was an information item, not a motion item. So thank you very much. Sorry to keep you so late.
Not a problem, thank you at all, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, going back to...
For I, Mayor?
For L. There you go. Okay, for L, this item has been moved from the consent agenda to the item for individual consideration. Consider resolution approving a grant of hotel occupancy tax in the amount of $45,000 to the Duncanville Lions Club to directly enhance tourism, tourism and the hotel industry. It was requested to be removed, moved to individual consideration by Mr. Contreras. Mr. Contreras, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Excuse me. It was brought to my attention on this issue that when the grant was first applied for, the $45,000 that would have to go back to the hotels was based on a certain amount of rooms. That number has significantly increased to the extent that they're at about $47,880, rounded off to $48,000. So my request is for the council to consider increasing the original amount that was requested to cover the actual rooms that they now have confirmed. And that's in our four hotels.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect, sir?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion to approve an increase of the amount originally requested, $45,000, to increase that to $48,000.
Have a second from Mr. Harvey. Mr. Cooks, I just saw your light come up.
Yeah, just for the sake of the information, I'd love, you know, I, I do see it, and I did see the, the email for that. I'll be voting for it, but I'd love to have that the presenter would also just go ahead and give us an addendum next time versus having one amount here and we're, and we are increasing about another amount. So as you see that before the council meeting, we've had this in the past. And in the past, I voted no because I wanted to go exactly what was, what was the request. But I'll just ask again that the organizers would either update us before this or we can give them exactly what they're asking for in the future. Thank you.
City manager, that request is being made to you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. So we have a motion to approve this amount at $48,000. It's been moved by Mr. Contreras. It's been seconded by Mr. Harvey. Please vote. Unanimately approves, thank you.
And then the city council calendar.
And we also postponed talking about the city calendar from the briefing session. We do need to talk about that because there are three dates in there that are affected by the special meetings we have to do because of redistricting. We are under a legal imposition of a deadline. What is that deadline again, city manager?
January 19th.
By January 19th, we have to submit the new redistricting map for the city of Duncanville. So it's, this is why you're seeing on your city calendar some special meetings identified. On November 30th, there's a special meeting for redistricting. Can you go for, and then in December, we have on December 7th. Now, I had a question about this, city secretary. We're going to have a city council meeting, a normal city council meeting on the 7th. In addition, and then redistricting is also going to be a part of that meeting?
Yes, sir, it's going to be the public hearing for the citizens to discuss if they have any questions or concerns. We'll have the consultants here.
My understanding was we only needed one public hearing.
And that will be the one.
That will be it.
That will be the one public hearing.
So the, so the meeting on November 30th is going to be information for us.
For, for city council, and y'all can make your recommendations or any concerns that you might have and questions for the consultant to present to y'all on what's going to happen.
So when it comes up on the 7th, that's when we actually...
Have the public hearing for the citizens.
And we take a vote on it?
No, sir.
No, no, because then we have the 21st.
Yes, sir. The 21st, we'll have the special meeting, and we will discuss it. And that's when we will take the vote if everything goes as planned as y'all want with the redistricting. If not, then we will have to move the meeting, the approval till the January meetings, as long as we have everything done by January 19th.
Okay, so council members, understanding the, the imposition of this time pressure on us, do you have any questions or problems with these dates?
November 30th, I do have a... I do have a conflict on November 30th, so I probably will not be making that meeting unless we can make an adjustment to it.
I'm sorry.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Gus, if needed, that the consultants can meet one-on-one with the individual council members if needed, if we don't have two of them here?
Gus Garcia, managing director for Development Service, yes, that's correct.
We probably need to change this because this is so important to us. I prefer to have the entire council available. Probably the best thing to do, I don't know the best, if, there's a piece of software out there. It's kind of free where you, you put out some dates and people check off when they're available.
It, it is a timing issue having to do with the public hearings. That's why we posted for November 30th. Because looking at the just January calendar, we're just going to have to... If we do December 7th, then we would have to have a public hearing. Second? Are y'all good with the second?
Second of December?
Yes.
No, I'll be out of town.
Yeah, I've got all sorts of stuff on December 2nd.
Would it be okay if the consultant met with you two one-on-one or...
Yeah, I don't want to hold it up till if the, so if the, if Mayor, if you want to move on, because I'm still up in the air on the 30th, but I'm okay.
You, you all are okay getting an individual briefing?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I will arrange that for y'all.
So we'll go with November 30th, and there will be individual briefings for y'all when available. Maybe the two of you can get together, get them all, both at one time. I don't know.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clear, just to clarify, Mayor, Council, what's going to happen on December 30th, I'm sorry, November 30th is the consultant is putting together a preliminary report on what his views are on any tweaking or adjustments to the report, and he'll be presenting to you for comment and consideration. So that's what he'll be doing with the two of you as well.
Will that be recorded?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Okay, so the information, you get it personally, and you'll also see the recording that's, that has taken place on the 30th for your information as well.
And Mayor, if any comments are made, he'll go back and make adjustments based on those comments. And then you'll have that for a public hearing in the next meeting.
Very good. Okay, any other comments about the calendar? Mr. Cooks.
Can we see the December?
December, please, one more time, please.
December, please, oh, thank you.
Seven and 21.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that completes item, whatever it was.
Kristen's item, we're done.
We're just hanging in. Okay, so now we go to, we're going to have executive session at the very end.
Mayor Gordon, can you also state that we're tabling the chamber item?
We took a mode, we took a vote on that.
Me, hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, 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 we didn't, we did, that was a different table. That was a different table. Hold on. Item, item...
That is for N.
N, for N is in Nora. I need a motion to table item for N.
So move, second.
A motion to approve, to table item for N by Mr. Cooks and seconded by Mr. Harvey. Please vote on table, tabling item for N as in Nora. Okay, that is approved with dissension by Mr. McNabb. Six to one. Okay, now we go to... We go to the monthly financial report. Yeah, item 6A, right? Oh, I'm putting money into it, it's not, that's a different one. Okay. Item 6A, the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Annual Report.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Thibodeau.
All right, so to revisit the emerging themes that were discussed in the formation of the comp plan, just to kind of review what was discussed in putting together the comprehensive plan that we have right now. So economic development was a major theme, connectivity was a major theme, community character and branding was another major theme. Neighborhoods, downtown, and development and/or redevelopment were the major emerging themes that came out of the formation of the current comp plan. So to revisit how progress is tracked, the planner, Ms. Chastity, who was in place back in 2018, 2019 is when she actually gave the last update to the comprehensive plan. So she discussed it hasn't changed. So we, we track progress via our staff reports, our work plan updates, our department quarterly reports, annual reporting, and the five-year review and update, kind of the major update piece for the comprehensive plan, which is pretty standard in most cities. So a lot of cities try to, try to quantify, try to score the progress of what's going on. You know, I could have gone down that road, but at some point, you feel like those numbers are a little bit arbitrary. They're just giving you levels of accomplishment. And also, I really just haven't been here long enough to really give an accurate, what I feel is an accurate scoring system to the comprehensive plan. And the next year, with a major five-year update, it's something I kind of want to talk about with everyone, the Planning Zoning Commission and council, on how to really track progress of a comprehensive plan. on how to really track progress of a comprehensive plan and really do that in a quantifying way. So what I did here was, you'll see I'll have the tables out of the implementation matrix cut out and you'll see these ovals next to them. So the green, solid green means it's completed or in full-on progress. Some things you really never complete. They just go in perpetuity. A green oval with a yellow outline means progress has been made, but we may need to replan or kind of recharge the way we're doing, what we're doing on that particular item. Plans made are in progress for the items that have a yellow oval with a green circle around them. Some of them might be leaning towards more of a green full, but maybe there's a little bit more we can do to better that program. And the yellow would be, maybe we need to rethink this. Didn't see much action. So as it relates to code enforcement, you can see we're in full progress to all of these items. I can, I can read them individually if you'd like, but if you want to stop me on one of these to talk about, I certainly can. You know, we have a new neighborhood enforcement manager, neighborhood integrity manager. So we have a new, basically a new system for code enforcement. So that has really answered these first six items. Something that has not taken place, you can see down towards the bottom is the formalized coordination with community efforts, targeting home improvements or emergency home repairs such as the property improvement, project days program to streamline, expand efforts. Now, we do have programs in place. We need to really, I believe we need to market those a little bit better and then maybe rethink some of those programs that we do have in place to make a win-win for both the city and, and our residents. Collaborate with nonprofit and community organizations to generate a database of community resources. We're starting to do this. I know current staff, we've joined the Rotary. I have an application I need to get to one of our community organizations locally. So we are doing these activities as well on the staff side. More policing, neighborhood vitality, these, these are in full effect. Going down to the third item, conduct a branding study and implement to reinforce the city's community character and marketing approach while engaging residents, business owners, and community groups. Talking to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the last meeting, we talked about rebranding the cities, you know, the Texas with the D and the star. Some asked if that was actually a new brand or not. Some of our newer members, they felt like it was kind of a little bit older, something to think about moving forward, but told them this was a pretty recent change. And then that was one item as far as branding the city amongst a lot of items we discussed. So there's definitely opportunity to do this. I think with current staff, new staff, we have a lot more marketers, marketing-minded folks on staff. So we'll be really, we're in full force on a lot of this, but I think we could do more. Create and implement the very next item and image, image zone enhancements as individual opportunity areas begin to transition and redevelop. Review economic conditions annually and modify priority projects accordingly. So image zones is not something we've actually started to implement. Now we've got to tackle the opportunity areas, start formulating small area plans and actually drafting ordinances off of them. And then, you know, we can get into these more detailed portions as far as imaging and that kind of thing. Prioritizing financing to one or two major gateways every two years. We definitely have plans for that, but it hasn't happened. I know that's a big discussion item is to work on our gateways. So that's where we're at right now for those items. Starting at the top on this one, create an arts commission to promote and implement public art throughout Duncanville, helping to enhance the city's identity and character. This is something that we may want to rethink or, you know, prioritize. Develop a wayfinding initiative to make, make it easier for residents, commuters, and visitors to find local destinations, destinations, facilities, and information. We don't have a wayfinding program right now, currently in the works. I've been through one. It's a lengthy, relatively expensive process. We may want to talk about this in a lot more detail next year because it's not just throw up a few signs around the city. It's a, it's a pretty involved process to develop a wayfinding program. A lot of them involve utilizing your existing inventory and dressing those up instead of just installing new, new signs are very expensive these days. So something we are on, in full force on is considering opportunities for major event programming. We're always looking for, for new opportunities there. Develop a land baking program to identify and prioritize key parcels to help promote larger-scale development in downtown. Mr. Garcia has done a fabulous job doing this since he got here, something we're in full force on. Implement applicable recommendations to the parks and trails master plan to strengthen connections to downtown amenities. This is something we've been doing as well. Some items that I haven't seen much traction on or perhaps we need to rethink is fund and implement phase-two improvements as identified in the downtown master plan. It may be due to a lack of my research and what I was looking at, but I don't recall a phase-two improvement as identified in the downtown master plan. So that's something we definitely need to look at and see what's going on there. Create an entity, possibly a downtown business association responsible for establishing a pit for reinvestment within downtown. It's not something that's happened quite yet. Coordinate downtown area streetscape improvements with planned capital infrastructure improvements. Definitely have plans for that. We just need to actually get something going. Of course, we have what's there right now. We maintain it, but what can we do more in the future? Right here, identify, prioritize, and pursue projects that can be funded through grants and public-private partnerships. Maybe some more planning on this, even though we are doing this in some instances. Consider internal relocation incentives and encourage locally-owned boutique retailers to relocate to the downtown. So this is something we've been talking about, both incentivizing relocation out of that downtown and bringing people into the downtown is something we're talking about internally. But what's the actual process? What are we going to implement? We need to get there. So review and revise the downtown district regulations. Is appropriate to better address redevelopment and non-conforming uses is something we are doing. The next two, the next item is something we are doing. We've, we've had some briefings and conversations with this council about opportunity areas and how do we better those, maybe prioritizing a few. Creating design standards in an overlay district or form-based codes for each opportunity area. Now, we have the downtown district that is predicated on form-based code. That's how it's developed. And so right now, we're in the planning process of expanding out of the downtown area, following the main street district in the, in the comprehensive plan and looking north as well and then to other areas around town that, that may need some eyes on. So identify and prioritize shopping centers that are opportune for pad site development. It's something that's happening. Of course, it's sort of happens naturally, but it's something you can obviously see. When you drive by our shopping centers with large, large parking lots that are underutilized, you know, that's, that's definitely opportunity for pad site development. This is green as an oval because it's happening naturally. It's obvious, it's obvious when you see it from a planning standpoint. But I think we could definitely do a better job, maybe marketing this opportunity outward. Identify buildings that are ideal for incubator spaces or maker spaces and for public-private partnerships is something we are doing right now. Consider opportunities for live-work housing in conjunction with incubator and maker spaces. We're doing this. I just believe we need to maybe make some, maybe refocus what we're doing. We have some projects we're capitalizing on that are happening right now, but what are some things we can do on city staff's side? Perform a diagnostic and update the zoning subdivision ordinances to ensure the city achieves the community vision established in the comprehensive plan. Obviously, we've done the zoning ordinance. That was done last year. I believe it's a great document that speaks to the current state of the city and is prime for, it allows staff to work with the, with the city that is prime for redevelopment. So we actually have a document that speaks to that. What we don't have is an updated subdivision ordinance. If you look through that, it was written some time ago. We run into a lot of scenarios with engineering about plating that we would like to help out our residents and applicants looking to submit a plat to do things more at the administration level. They're referred to as minor plats, amended plats. Of course, the state, at the Texas government code, they have language for this. So we can do this. We just don't have it written into our subdivision ordinance like most cities do. Things like cross-access, fire lane standards, things like that that help your plating, the easements that are dedicated on those plats is something the subdivision ordinance really helps you out with. So that is something we definitely need to tackle in the future. Add additional planning staff to assist with current planning activities, allowing senior staff to focus on long-range planning. It'd take a moment of silence for that piece. And perform a diagnostic of property maintenance codes is something we are, we are currently working on. Of course, our new staff is, is highly involved in these kind of things. Conduct a rail study to identify the ideal location for a rail station and to identify additional infrastructure requirements. It's tough to go because the rails, the railway that we have that cuts through town is BNSF. It's not really a light commuter rail or anything like that, unfortunately. Coordinate with tech stock regarding ongoing I-20 and Highway sixty-seven projects. Of course, this just happens through the public works department, planning staff as well with development services when those projects come up. Prioritize recommended roadway improvements. Hire a grant coordinator or consultant to identify transportation funding sources. Create a funding strategy and timeline for improvements. Obviously, we have plans for that, but getting that individual in place, maybe somebody help us out with other things as well is something we want to look into. The next two items reference the roadway treatments menu and identify the suitable treatments for each roadway project. Not really sure what that was. I know Mr. Ramey is, is working on the, you know, his CIP program and doing these kind of things, but I don't know if it's specific towards what this is discussing. Develop street sections specific to each roadway treatment. Again, that's related to the last one. Prioritize missing sidewalk segments is something we do, but installing them, I think we need to replan for our infill development sites that don't have development right now, but are missing that connection with the sidewalk. Perhaps the right-of-way spills into those properties that we can utilize that area for and go ahead and do that without waiting for them to be developed. Coordinate transportation and connectivity improvements with the parks and trails master plan as well as other local and regional plans, something we're doing. Maybe just need to refocus internally. Planning has a big part on that and helping parks and rec. So we had a conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I wanted to get an honest take on what they thought. So at the beginning of November, actually, I'm sorry, this was the last, the beginning of October, we made sure everybody had a copy of their comp plan. Please take the next two weeks to read it. Come back. Let's have a real conversation about what you see and how you feel. So actually, the, the general consensus was the plan still does have a lot of applicability to the city. It's still speaking to us. But some were not sure all future land designations are compatible to associated areas. One thing that came out was it was in association with the truck repair S U P request on Redbird. I believe that was four oh-two Redbird. When we were talking about the comp plan association of that, the retail commercial district talks about Big Box and hotels. They weren't sure if, if Redbird Lane really would warrant that kind of redevelopment. So that was one thing they brought up. They weren't, one individual was not sure if the plan speaks to the city from a socioeconomic standpoint. And the same individual wasn't sure of the validity of the SWOT analysis. It's a good tool, but should the plan be based on the SWOT, basically is what this individual felt like he was reading when he reached through the comp plan. And the plan seemed to be developed as a cookie cutter plan. I think, you know, we have our Freezing Nichols, which I have worked with as a consultant in many other cities. I think we're getting to that point where if you look at this city's comp plan versus that city's comp plan, you might start seeing some similarities. And I think that's what came out of this comment.
Comment on that last bullet, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir.
You may want to pass back to the P and Z commission member who made that comment. You may want, city manager, you may want to provide that individual with how many months of work went into the development of that comp plan. It's no cookie cutter. There was, we met, I was on the, that steering committee, not as a member of the city council, but as a member of the EDC at that time. There were months of work and many dollars spent by the city to come up with the best use of that comp plan. Mr. Cook cites it several, you know, you, all, you, he's readily in apparent in terms of what's in that comp plan because it does apply. And so I, I accept the perception.
Sure.
But at some point, it may be well to go, to let that individual know how long it took to develop that plan and the, the funds and the human resources spent by the, that committee to develop that comp plan. It was, it was very extensive and it was, there was a lot of work.
That was our.
So he's, that person is entitled to their opinion based on what they see. Maybe a good idea to just let them know that we accept the, that perception. Here's the facts. Okay. Mr., let's see, Mr. Harvey?
Just real quickly, Mayor, and I thank you for that. You know, Freezing Nichols does this sort of work with a lot of cities throughout the metroplex. And the other thing is there are a number of cities here in the metroplex that basically experience the same kind of problems. You know, redevelopment, coping with homelessness, panhandling, that sort of thing. So a, a number of cities are dealing with some of the same problems. So I'm a little cautious about saying this is a cookie cutter approach. I think that's a little dismissive.
Mr. Cooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Thibodeau, I appreciate you trying to present this in a way to show us with, with the, the dots off to the side to kind of show us, okay, this is kind of in progress. This is where we are with this. And I understand the difficulty in, in trying to measure the, the progress and how much of this we've actually accomplished. And so are there any ways that, that we can concretely or objectively measure where we are with, with the comp plan and how much progress we've made with the plan as it is? I understand that it's to be revised and changed, but just as far as, as it is, you know, any objective, concrete ways to measure our progress?
The best way I've seen, it was kind of a funny situation. So the city of Plano came out with a new comprehensive plan was totally online and it had a measuring tool that would show you the progress made. And it was all, I wouldn't say automated necessarily, not fully automated, but it's controlled by the, the comprehensive planning team for the city. Great device. And the fact that it was a web-based plan made that ability to actually quantify something meaningful, you know, that kind of thing. Now, the city sued, I'm sorry, the citizens sued the city and the plan had to be removed because they, the citizens won court. But from a measuring standpoint, the best thing I've seen is that right there. It was a web-based solution that showed in, you know, not real, real time, but as projects happen, it would be reflected online. You know, we've accomplished this today, you know.
Similar to our, I know online for our bond projects, there's, it shows us kind of the timeline, where we are. And, you know, this is, you know, this is where we expect to be in so many months and.
Sounds like it. I'd have to see it.
Be an online Gantt chart.
Could be.
Mr. Cooks or Mr. Contreras?
I can go back to that last slide.
Yes, sir.
So this was feedback they gave you. Have you had an opportunity to actually meet with them as a group and, and address each one of these comments? And try to work through these?
This exact conversation will be presented at the next meeting, kind of as a follow-up. So that will be next, kind of what was discussed at council.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea that you're doing that because, you know, they're, they're citizens who volunteer to serve, not necessarily highly trained in any specific area of these issues that come before them. So the more information they can get back to help them understand their roles, I think we might see less things come to us and they may be able to sort these things out instead of struggling with some of the issues because they're complex.
They are.
And I understand that, but I appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, let me just say on the comp plan, it is, it is, it is more, it's a direction. It is not giving us really verbatim what we need to do. And so I think it's, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is really just a guide. But it really, it's really more detailed that we have to put in that comp plan to finish it up. I think we're doing some of it during our retreat, but the comp plan is just a, really a guide to get us started in the right direction. It is not encompassing and we're going to do everything that's in there. So we just need to be aware there's more to that comp plan than just the book itself and reading every item that's in that book.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'll add, in, in the comp plan, each one of those action items has a dollar sign to it. And looking at the dollar signs, some of those are two and three points of a dollar sign, meaning there's a lot of money that has to be found in order to accomplish some of those things. So as, as Mr. Cooks said, it's a, it is, it's a guide and it is a plan for where we want to go and how we accomplish those things. And a lot of those things, you know, looking down there in terms of the, the individuals responsible or the offices responsible for accomplishing all those items, planning is in there like, what, ninety-nine percent of the time? So we understand the burden that places on your shoulders and appreciate all that you do for the hard work that you're putting into this.
Thank you, sir. Love doing it.
Any other comments? Mr. Cooks?
Thank you. This question might be either for the city secretary or the city manager, but. but do we have scheduled or would there be any benefit to having joint meetings between council and P and Z or between council and Economic Development Board?
I am going to schedule, because before we were doing every six months, we would meet with DC, DC, P and Z, Park Board. So yes, I will be looking into that to start scheduling those meetings for y'all.
Thank you.
And we have had those in the past, sir. Yeah, it is normal. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Now the annual finance, let's see, where am I? What is it called? The monthly financial report as of September 30th, 2021. Ms. Atmore?
Mayor, is that one, is that one of the ones that we could perhaps delay until our next meeting? Or is there something there that she just...
If we delay it till the next meeting, she can just update it, you know. I, we all had an opportunity to look at the package, we've looked at the numbers. She's given us a pretty good explanation. She's probably just going to reiterate what we've already seen in the package. So if we're agreeable, we will post, we'll push this one to the next meeting.
I think you'll like what you see when the next one...
We talked to Mr. Dean a little long, a whole lot tonight, but I'm just kidding.
Okay. All right, so that will conclude our agenda items except for executive session.
The noise ordinance, sir? Would you like to table that one too?
Mayor, I, I've talked, I, we had a break in my participation, and I've talked with the PD and what we'd like to do. All I need to know is, do you want decibel readers or not decibel readers? If that makes a complete comment, I got your comments, and we'll bring... Bring back some additional information for you.
But I, I would like to know, there's, there's, and I didn't talk during the session, real quick. If you use decibel readers, I would not rely solely on decibel readers. So I would, what I would do is use a decibel reader to create a presumption that it's a violation. But I've got to make something in place for when decibel readers just won't work. Because of atmospheric conditions, because of wind, because of the weather, the humidity, those things are sensitive.
Proximity to the, to the source of the noise.
Or overnoise, or what they call the ambient.
Ambient noise.
Example, your illustration about what you can hear, that has a lot to do with what you hear other places based on the traffic, which is the ambient noise based on time of day and atmospheric condition.
And I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
I would do a decibel level and allow the officers to make that call based on certain...
I'd be okay with that.
Another thing that I'm, that I observed in Mr. Cook's comments and the rest of your kind of, a lot of what we need to do is limit the activity, not the noise. So the activity of not working construction before 7:00 AM, after 7:00 AM. Having phonographic or amplified music in your backyard after a certain time. I think that would take care of a lot of the kinds of complaints we're getting from the police. So maybe limiting those activities instead of focusing on the noise.
Well, we need to be careful because we've got construction going on in our city right now. It passed dark because that's when they can do it.
You get to make the choice, but you know, it's hard. If you're going to allow construction, how do you control how much noise the back door makes? It's going to make the noise.
You don't, and it's a, I'm just saying that in, in order to accomplish some of the infrastructure tasks around the city, there is construction going on in residential neighborhoods as we speak, in the dark.
But those things that people do like, they shouldn't move along after dark, it's going to block the street.
I think...
Five thirty in the morning, and those kinds of things.
So I think the consensus in terms of what we heard in the briefing session was that the council consensus was that some changes should be included into the ordinance that we have.
And I'll work with the, the police chief and we'll bring back...
Okay.
...any things that you want to make policy.
Mr. Koontz?
And I want to emphasize again, the recommendations I made are just, the suggestions I made were just, just that, and I don't believe it's unreasonable to ask council to reconsider the ordinance and consider adding some of those specifications. And I'm, I'm more than willing to, you know, some of those have, you know, they're not accepted as is, but if there's any way we can, we can compromise, I believe that there's definitely some merit to at least considering making some of the changes, so I would ask the council to, to consider that.
Thank you. Thank you. You have your guidance.
We'll work on it. I'll work with the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Any other stops before we go to executive session? All right, we are going to recess city council. The timestamp is 10:22.